Return to orders, counsel, which please call the roll.
Fish.
Here.
Saltzman.
Novick.
Here.
Fritz.
Here.
Hales. Here. Okay, we have a couple of time certain items this afternoon, the first is 368.
Did you want to take care of that item left over from this morning?
Oh, sorry, yes, we do have one item left over from the morning agenda, which is 367.
Authorized application to the Department of Homeland Security through its Federal Emergency Management Agency for a grant in the amount of $100,000 for a smoke alarm, carbon monoxide detector awareness campaign, and the purchase of smoke alarm carbon monoxide detectors for the hearing impaired community.
Good afternoon, welcome.
Hello. Hi, so your name? My name's Kim Cosmas, I'm with Portland Fire and Rescue.
Erin Brooks, Portland Fire and Rescue.
So tell us about this grant.
Basically, we have been providing smoke detectors or smoke alarms for the general public since 1990, and it's a concern of ours that the hard of hearing community has never really been approached for helping them with smoke alarms also and carbon monoxide. But that's one thing we would like to do is be able to have this offer for that community to give them the specialized units because they're not typical. The thing is, is that they have to have a bed shaker, which is one portion of it, and then there's a strobe also, that's another piece. And so they are expensive, so that's been one deterrent possibly for people, and the state does offer it currently, but we would also like to be able to offer that to those communities.
And as a note, if folks who are hard of hearing do call us, we do provide them with one, but we want to do outreach. A lot of people don't know that they need them.
That's great.
How expensive are they compared to the, you know, sort of standard store bought?
Well, standard smoke alarm is anywhere from $20 to $30 or so, and with both pieces of the unit, it comes to about $297. So it is a lot different in cost, definitely.
But still, if you get this grant, you can buy quite a few of them, so.
Yes, yes.
You know, I'm just curious, the other day I lost my keys, and I was in a fit about it, and my wife reminded me that I have an app that allows me to locate them. So I just pushed the app, and it told me that I had left them at work. But I'm wondering, could you conceivably have a system where you got a notification on your phone or something else, or your computer, in addition to what you currently have?
As far as alerting the individual? Well, the way these work is that they also would need to have a smoke alarm, a basic smoke alarm, in their, wherever they're living, their residence, because it's all keyed off of the alert. The tone of the alert sets off the bed shaker and the strobe. So an app on your phone, I honestly don't know if they have something like that.
Other questions, comments from the council? Great, thank you both, thanks very much. Is there anyone that wants to speak on this item? If not, then it's an emergency ordinance, let's take a roll call vote.
Fritz.
Thank you for your work.
I. Fish.
Thank you for spending half a day with us. Sure you got a lot out of all the morning proceedings, so. Aye, thank you.
Novick.
Thank you, aye.
Hales.
Yeah, this is good work, there was just a really tragic death in Maryland of a whole family from carbon monoxide poisoning. So these detectors save lives, and it's really good work that we make them available to folks that would not be able to hear a conventional one, so thanks for doing this, and wish you good luck with the grant application.
Thank you.
Aye, thank you. Okay, let's move to our time certain item, 368.
Except report from Matrix Consulting Group on the Portland Police Bureau Staffing Study.
Thank you, well, let me call up Chief O'Day and Richard Brady from Matrix Consulting to talk about this report. I just want to frame this briefly, this is just going to be a presentation of the report in what's obviously a busy council session this week. There'll be a little bit of time for public feedback, but this is mainly a presentation. I just want to thank the team for comprehensive evaluation of both our span of control and our staffing levels in the police bureau. This was really in response to a budget note from the council in our 2013-14 budget. So the questions they're going to address here in summary, and of course, a significant document to back it up, is are we focusing our resources in the right areas? Do we have the right ratios of management to direct service folks in the bureau? Other feedback on how our management systems operate in the bureau? So what have we learned from this careful inquiry into the structure and workforce size in the various tiers within the police bureau, and how can we make it better? So with that, I'll turn it over to the chief and his team.
Here, let me supplement the record with one thing, because it actually, the original genesis was the span of control report.
Right.
That you asked Steve and me to do. And out of that came some questions about span of control and supervisor to employee ratio. And the next iteration was, I think it was the chief, the then-chief, who said, "We want to do an independent study to look at this," and there was some disagreement about methodology. So we were pleased to support that, and a lot of good has come out of that original assignment the mayor made, where he asked a number of us to pair up and do things, and the span of control, I think, is an example.
Yeah, it's good work.
So, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Chief O'Day, or?
Yeah, I'll have Richard start first with his presentation, and I'll follow him.
All right, thank you.
Okay, I've gotten the message pretty clearly that you've got a crowded agenda, so we've got a 200, 300-page report and 92 recommendations, and I'll try not to talk too fast. But let me walk you through the study, and I think some of the more important things that we came up with. First of all, let me remind you what our scope of work was. It was a comprehensive management, staffing, and operations study to look at, answering some important questions. First of all, is the police bureau providing the levels of service that this community expects needs and has historically received? Do you have the right number of people to do that? Are they managed and organized effectively in order to do that? Most of our analysis was from the ground up, looking very carefully at workload and service levels, but we also compared you to best practices, and came up with this report that has a summary of everything that we did in this study. How we got here was really intensive. We worked for several months just doing fieldwork. We started in the middle of last summer, and we started with extensive interviews of staff, management staff, supervisory staff, but many line staff. We, in all, we had over 200 interviews, individual interviews of staff within this. And that input was important enough for us, where we supplemented that with an anonymous employee survey, to which about 60% of the employees responded, with 600-plus responses. The input wasn't everything that we needed to do, a study like this, where there's almost as many numbers as there are words. So we collected a lot of data as well, quantifying workloads in every function, service levels, work practices, and things like that. And I think the analysis reflects that empirical, that really detailed kind of approach. Throughout this process, we met, had a parallel reporting relationship, extensively meeting with the bureau command staff to review facts and issues and alternatives, but we also had a broadly-based project steering committee that we met with, particularly the second half of the study, to review what we were coming up with. You know, a report like this necessarily focuses on the improvement needs, especially when we're talking about organization and management and operational types of things, and sometimes the more positive things get lost. And so I wanted to take a couple of seconds just to talk about the positive things that we found as we went through this. First of all, it's important to stress that in a number of indicators that we examine in field operations and investigations, and even in internal operations, there are high levels of service being provided to the community as well as internally, and we can talk about that more as we go through this. Secondly, there's been a lot of external scrutiny of the bureau in the last couple of years, most notably the Department of Justice. And I think, the thing I've said about this whole process that I think is true is that, unlike a lot of cities in the country, many of which we work with, the department isn't just responding to what DOJ tells them to do. They are proactively meeting and exceeding what DOJ is coming up with requirements, and I think that's a really important distinction. Deployments in general, in the operations branch and field services, generally balance the proactive and the reactive kind of workloads, which is a very important thing in law enforcement. You're not going to be effective as a police agency by responding to calls for service, you're going to be effective by doing something about the root causes of crime. And as you'll see as we go through this, they've got high levels of proactivity and patrol, and they use it. Investigative clearance rates are high, and that's a positive thing as well. Not just multi-jurisdictional task force, but other ways of coordinating, cooperating with other justice agencies, schools, other health and human service agencies, is really high here, and I think that's an effective part of community policing today, to recognize that you can't do it all, and you need to partner with other kinds of agencies in the community. So as I said, and support functions generally meet both internal, in terms of supporting the police officers, and external, supporting the community in the way they interact. Some of the key themes that run through this report is, I wanted to stress, because it runs through all of the recommendations that we've made here. Number one is that while this is a very community-oriented bureau, more needs to be done to cement that community focus, and I think that is summarized in the use of the word "formal." And I think there needs to be more formal approaches of figuring out what the problems are in the community, deploying people, even managers, to address those problems and to create those ties, and to make them accountable for it. And that's something that we stress, even in this staffing study is an important part of the management processes here. While the bureau is taking a lot of steps to increase the use of data, creating an intelligence-led policing effort, and they've always had a strong data orientation, the demands of the external focus and what we're asking the bureau to do will increase that need, and they need help to do it. It's not as easy as a police officer in the field pushing a function key and finding out everything he or she needs to know about the problems out in the community, that takes help, and that's an important part of several of the recommendations we made. Thirdly, more flexibility is needed in the bureau, wherever we're looking, but especially in operations and investigations, that you need to have the performance management plan in place, the way to look at it, and the ability to move people around, because problems are going to change every year. They're changing right now, they've changed just since we've submitted the draft report, and you need to be nimble, and that's what a modern department needs to be. Management consistency is critical, it's something we found in the employee survey, the message is sometimes not consistently delivered throughout the organization, and possibly externally as well. So the new management team needs to create a consistent message and find some mechanisms to make sure everyone within the department is on the same page. Operations, the patrol, obviously the largest part of the department, and an awful lot of our time and an awful lot of this report, is dedicated to that. Some really important findings associated with this. First of all, the workload and the proactive abilities in field operations are relatively evenly distributed. The East Precinct has more workload than the other precincts, but at the beat level, beat officers are handling within a fairly narrow range the same amount of workload, which means they all have the same amount of ability to be proactive, and that's important here. It's important everywhere, but here, you've got more proactive time than we typically see in larger cities. It's over 50% of your time. Many of our clients for agencies this size are struggling to get 35 or 40%, so you've got this luxury. The good thing is that this proactive time is being used. You're generating a lot of proactive activity and addressing problems in the community. But again, the use of data, supervisory oversight, and making people accountable so that this is not randomly generated activity, it's directed toward problems in the community, is a need that needs to be made, and this needs to be an ongoing kind of process, review, tracked, et cetera, so that people are redeployed, redirected as necessary. And the new intelligence-led policing and other efforts are going to enhance that and help support that. We looked at the three precincts, you used to have more precincts, four and five precincts in the past, we think three is appropriate now. We think it's appropriate for span of control reasons, we think it's appropriate for community access is not jeopardized with three, and the cost of additional command and administrative personnel outweigh the benefits of increasing the number of precincts at this time. In special operations, there are a couple of recommendations we make. Need to redeploy some traffic personnel so weekend coverage is enhanced, you need some additional canine capabilities. School resources officers, you don't have enough school resources officers for the high schools you have at a minimum. You need to have a school resources officer in each high school, it's, I think, an important aspect today, both from the perspective of working with school administrators, teachers, parents, and students programmatically, but also to phone calls and other kinds of activity. We think that the cadets and the reserves in the bureau are an important asset, a little underutilized in some respects. We think you need to develop a process in-house to increase their capacity and their use within the department. Investigations, so we went through a thorough process of looking at the case management system and how cases were assigned to these different investigative units, and there's a lot of pages in there that result in moving people around. It may seem like we're just moving people around, but it's based on, for an effective case management system, which you generally have, although we make some other recommendations to improve it, what are the effective caseloads so that you're spending enough time in investigations? And overall, you're a little deficient, in spite of moving people around, but more significantly, you've got some major gaps that you typically don't see in larger police departments today. You don't have an auto theft unit, more importantly, I think, you don't have a computer crimes unit. It's not just handling cases that are computer-oriented in general, or specifically, but also as a case assistant to other crimes, child abuse, other types of crimes for which computers are in use today, and you don't really have the capacity you need to do that investigations. We think you need to return to something like the district investigative efforts, where generalist investigators are centrally managed but decentralized in terms of their responsibility, so that relatively minor crimes, especially property crimes, get some sort of follow-up, and that's, can be neglected now, even though patrol tries to help out. I think one of the principal recommendations in this report, and it gets to this issue of proactivity and coordination of services, is to reorganize what we're calling the proactive investigative units. Right now, you've got gangs, which is a large driver of organized criminal activity in the city, as that relates to prostitution, as it relates to drugs, as it relates to other forms of human trafficking, and those are in different parts of the bureau right now, four different parts of the bureau. We think that they should be in one part of the bureau so that the same suspects can be more regularly worked by common detectives in a single system, and that the assignments can switch over time depending on what the problems are. So we think that the criminal activity and the criminals need to be better coordinated in terms of how you're working that. Again, support can't happen without people who can support personnel, so we're recommending a crime analyst to help with case research, case enhancement, and things like this. Over time, we think there's an opportunity to civilianize the criminalists, the field evidence collection personnel, that's a growing area, it's becoming the norm even in larger organizations, and it's not just a cost issue, but it's a way of finding employees who, this is what they want to do, and they want to spend a career in forensics. Services branch, the last branch. Several support management and management positions should be civilianized relating to fleet and records. Civilization was something that we looked at throughout the organization. We think that the follow-up through the strategic planning process from all these various directions that it's coming from, needs to have some sort of facilitator to help coordinate that, and to help develop a message that can be post-strategic plan process generated to the whole community, as well as internally within the bureau. You're going through the regional records management process, it's difficult to tell at this time what your needs are going to be. I don't think they're going to be greater, but they're going to be for different kinds of records management personnel to help you analyze and quality control information coming from the new records management approach that you've got. We've recommended three additional analyst positions, and I think there's been some budget adjustment since we did this report and today, but we think that because of the intensive demands and support required from the post-DOJ environment, you're going to need two analysts to help support that in terms of reporting, but another analyst is needed to help to transition to an intelligence-led policing effort within the bureau. Lastly, organization and management issues, we looked at the overall structure within the department, it looks specifically at some span of control issues and allocation of functions, but we get back and start out with some of these management kinds of issues, that accountability is critical for the bureau at this point in time, well, for all points in time, but because of the scrutiny, because of the visibility, it's really important now. Because of that, because of the work it takes, your current rank structure is appropriate, and we looked at that pretty thoroughly. And in terms of responsibilities to the community, and making sure that we've got performance plans in place for the department, your current rank structure in terms of span of control, layers of the organization, et cetera, are effective. Most spans of control for mid-level managers are effective as well. If you assume that a span of control isn't just numbers of reports, it's also responsibilities. So I'm thinking of positions like adjutants that they have for each of the branches and for the chief, are important functions that have because they've got a lot of responsibilities in terms of administrating what's going on within each of those branches within the organization. Some spans of control are too low, and we've recommended a couple of positions being eliminated, traffic being most notably. At the top, though, the span of control is too wide, and we think that you should consider a fourth branch to split off the operational support side from operations. If you don't do that, we've recommended that the operational support things go to patrol to increase the coordination between patrol and operational support things, like patrol SWAT, things like that. But we think that that would make it way too wide, so we recommend it splitting that off. The system of rotations, that's something we looked at toward the end of the study, because the more we heard about transfers and reassignments within the department, the bigger an issue it was. Right now, quite often, personnel, management personnel can be rotated too frequently to be effective. Sometimes it's weeks or months, and it's going to take a couple of years, especially in many of these specialty positions, to get good at what you're doing and to be effective as a supervisor and manager. So we think that except in exceptional circumstances, that rotation should be a two-year minimum within the department, bureau. Lastly, with the new chief, a new command staff, and all these other things that are going on, some team-building process that makes sure that the results of these directions that you're implementing through this process, and for other processes that you've gone through in the last year, is coordinated and transmitted consistently internally into the community. So I don't think I can talk any faster than that, but that is the report.
That was both clear and swift. Let me ask you a couple of questions before I turn it over to the chief and Captain Scruggs, and maybe they can respond too. One thing I haven't spotted yet, it may be in the body of the report, and I didn't spot it, and that is the assignment of responsibility to top managers, not just whether we should have a fourth branch or not, but are we rightly configured in terms of what they do? This got distorted for a while in Portland, because for a while, we had this artifact of having managers represented by a union, we went to the Employment Relations Board and got that clarified, that lieutenants and below are represented, and captains and above aren't.
Right.
So now that that's cleared up, are we assigning the right responsibilities to those captains and commanders and assistant chiefs, in your opinion?
Yeah, well, I think that that falls in a number of different ways. I mentioned the adjutant structure that you have here, and departments this size tend to have that kind of position, because otherwise, top managers within the organization are too bogged down with administrative things relating to scheduling and transfers and other kinds of administrative things, even down to insurance and things like that, and not being able to function effectively at that level to figure out whether you're achieving your goals, your service priorities, et cetera. Lower down in the organization, there were a number of one-over-one kind of reporting relationships, which is a red flag for us, and we looked at several of those, and in traffic, we recommended none. We looked at, in each of the precincts, there's one-over-one reporting relationships between commanders and captains, which we thought very seriously about, until we understood better what they're trying to achieve here, and that we're trying to get operations management effectively covered at one level, and making sure that we freed somebody to make sure it's working and to effectively work with the community. So we think the allocations of responsibilities are generally where you should be in a department this size and this complex, although we made some recommendations to change both roles as well as allocation of managers, staff.
Okay, I'll look at those, yeah, good, thank you. Okay?
Just one question, Mayor. One of the early slides you had, you talked a little bit about the way the bureau interacts with the community.
Yeah.
And that relationship, and of course, one of the questions that comes up is how do you measure that? You know, despite our best efforts, we don't hear from whatever 90-something percent of the people that the chief serves. So how do comparable bureaus measure that, and what are the key factors that you look to?
So again, I get back to the word of formality, and so it's not just reaching out and going to meetings, because as important as that is for the contact, it doesn't result in something that can be a plan for how you use your resources to meet whatever problems are identified out there. So the strategic planning process that we talk about needs to incorporate and create a process such as that, so that you're working with the community to come up with specific programs and deployments and strategies to address problems that are raised. In no community, you're going to get 90% or 80% or even 9% to be active participants in that, but you need to maximize that through public information and for involvement and use leveraging community groups to get as much information as possible. But the important part is from, because you've got such a relatively large and very diverse city, is to converting whatever, what you're hearing into plans to address the concerns that people have in the community, whether they're deployment things, visibility things, whether they're addressing specific problems that may occur in one part of the city and not many others, things such as that.
Great. Questions?
Did you look at the mounted patrol? And is that reflected in the report as to whether the staffing of that is appropriate?
We looked, we did look at it, it is in the report, a very brief mention of it, and we're supporting it for the roles that it has here right now.
What kind of factors did you look at?
We looked at what their roles are and what they're being used for, mostly for special kinds of circumstances, we looked at the cost, and we looked at how they interrelate, how they coordinate with other units.
And did you look at the size of the number of officers assigned?
Yeah, yeah, we did.
And that's appropriate?
It is, it's appropriate comparatively, first of all, but I think, more importantly, it's compared, it's appropriate for the size and the use that they have here.
Thank you.
And we did look at that seriously, because we've recommended elimination in many cities we've worked with, where you don't have the need as great as you do here.
Okay, thank you. Chief?
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners, and I'll not go line by line on these recommendations, I'll be pretty brief, and I know your time's very precious right now. I do want to start off by thanking the Matrix Group for their extensive work on this project, I really appreciate the significant time that they spent with people within the bureau and learning what we do and why we do some of the things we do. We do some things different, and I appreciate them taking the time to learn why we do that. And I also want to thank Captain John Scruggs for being our project manager on this, and for the members of our advisory group that included Commissioner Novick, for their time commitment to this project. As you know, this project was directed out of the budget process last year, and also was a part of the follow-on to the city's span of control review. You know, for us in general, the staffing study supports kind of what most of us have felt since the loss of 55 positions in the budget before last. You know, with the loss of those positions that year, and that followed on after several other years of cuts, we had become really lean, and it really limited our ability to start addressing new issues, or continuing to support for some of our needed specialized functions to the degree that we think that we needed to. You know, one of our coping strategies has been to have some of our positions that historically have been non-sworn to be sworn. You know, by having some sworn members in some of those positions, it allows us to use them double-duty for other things when they're not doing their day job, such as supporting our overtime staffing, major mission support, and also the staffing of detached assignments. Of course, the real answer is to have the adequate staffing level and have, you know, non-sworn personnel working in non-sworn compatible jobs. We've become very practiced at moving resources around temporarily and being as nimble as possible. However, we still have gaps in our service, even with that, and some of our gaps in service just can't be addressed. And some of our gaps in service just can't be addressed by moving resources. Emerging in significant issues like computer crime requires specialized training in positions to really effectively address. We have a strong need for analysts. This includes both crime analysts and investigative analysts. These positions allow us to work more efficiently and effectively. And this is especially important during times of limited resources. And analysts are also a significant component for us in meeting the reporting needs of the Department of Justice settlement agreement and the reporting desires of the public. This year, we've seen a significant increase in gang gun violence. And I've asked the Tactical Operations Division leadership and the assistant chiefs to work with their partners and to review what we may need to do differently regarding gang gun violence. I'm not sure as a community that we have the right amount of outreach, community engagement, the holistic approach, or Bureau resources invested in this problem that we may need. We've had almost three times the number of gang violence reduction team call-outs this year as compared to last. Another crime that is increasing rapidly is thefts from vehicles. We're up pretty significantly, about 30% from last year, and auto theft is also continuing to trend upward. We continue to try to be innovative within our existing resources whenever possible. This year, we are piloting the concept of sector policing versus having individual district policing pieces. And this is in an attempt to be able to maximize our problem-solving and community engagement capacity. Instead of having 20 or 25 individual districts being managed by single officers, we have divided the precinct into four separate sectors where teams of officers work. The hope is that this will maximize our efficiency, allow us to take all of our calls, and still allow for proactive and follow-up efforts like the walking beat that was so successful last year downtown and in the Hawthorne area, and do it all on a more cost-neutral basis within existing resources. Looking ahead, the Bureau is facing the possibility of significant retirements in the next three years. This will require more background investigators and recruiting positions, which we forfeited in years past when we stopped hiring. We knew we would need these positions back when we started hiring again, and that time of need is upon us. I think that the staffing study offers the opportunity to help us continue the conversation about rightsizing the police bureau. I think rightsizing the police bureau needs to be done by incorporating community expectations, the Department of Justice settlement agreement, and the Mayor and Commissioners' priorities. I thank you all for your time. I know this is a very busy time of year for you. I appreciate your thoughtful consideration around such an important issue. And know that I understand the tremendous challenges you face in balancing the competing needs of the city. Also know that we will continue to try to do the best that we can regardless of staffing levels, and we will try to never let a lack of resources limit our problem-solving creativity. Thank you.
Chief, Captain Scruggs, anything else to add?
Mayor, no. I was just here to answer any questions.
Questions, your team?
So Mayor, we've gotten like the Cliff Notes version of this presentation, but the truth is, our time certain isn't until three, so we do have a little bit of time.
We've got some time. We've got some folks that want to speak to us, but we do have some time to have some dialogue here, so.
Couple of questions. So Chief, big picture. There are a lot of very specific recommendations, and they are coded high, medium, and low priority in terms of suggested, you know, sequencing and implementation. Is it your intention, Chief, to prepare a brief report to council specifically identifying those recommendations that you think we ought to be focused on earlier in the process and a rationale for that? Or how do you intend to take these recommendations and translate them into a priority list, a bucket list for the city?
Well, knowing we're working to be able to do that today, my hope was this could just be the start of the conversation, taking a look at, here's what these outside recommendations are, and just me giving a brief overall. Here's where we're definitely short at. That format you suggested, I would be very happy to do. There's certainly some things that I think are important sooner rather than later. You know, the analyst needs are something that are just critical for us, especially around our Department of Justice needs there. And I feel very lacking around things like computer crime.
Why are we seeing an uptick in vehicle theft and break-in?
That's a good question. The, we are looking, and it's also one of the reasons why we want and feel a need for more analyst work to help us. There's two kinds of analysts that we're looking for. One, that can tell us on a much more real-time basis, you're getting car parole break-ins, say up in the Pearl, and be able to react better to that. And the other is looking at an investigative analyst. You know, for instance, the tremendous uptick in shootings that we've had on the gang team. We know we're having a whole bunch, but we don't know why. An investigative analyst can help us kind of connect those dots and maybe start being able to pin that down to, here's what you have going. You have this family fighting with this family.
And Chief, I was thinking, when you're talking about break-ins and cars and things, I was also thinking about where I live. We've also had an uptick in home invasion, people breaking into homes and stealing stuff. And my assumption has been, some of this is driven by drugs. People are breaking in, stealing things, raising cash, whatever. How do we, can we, is there some tool that we have where we can do a better job alerting people by neighborhood about the specific challenges they're facing and also get useful information upstream about the things you need to be more vigilant about? I'll give you an example. I, in my neighborhood, I think a lot of people, because it's pretty cohesive, they probably don't lock their front doors at night. A lot of people in my street don't lock their cars, you know, and they're just rolling the dice, and all kinds of things. And I wonder, is there, can we, is there, are there technologies or other things we can use to get advice and recommendations out to folks based on what the data you're seeing by neighborhood, sort of common sense things about do's and don'ts to deal with whatever uptick you're showing?
Oh, absolutely. When you look at, there's great ways of combining analyst work with public information work and even with the technologies we have like crime mapping and be able to get that information accurately and get it out to folks.
Yeah, I wonder, I mean, can I, can I today, if I wanted to, go to a website, put in my zip code, and could I access that kind of information?
Right now, for us, you'd be really limited because our analyst capability right now is shifted from a lot of our crime analyst work to our Department of Justice analyst work. But we've had times in the past where we've been able to be much more real-time about that.
Yeah, and for example, you know, if I could punch in my zip code and find out that a lot of bikes have been stolen, cars have been broken into, those kinds of things. I mean, there is some common sense stuff the neighbors could do, like making sure there's a lock on their garage, making sure they're locking doors. It seems like every time we don't lock the car, someone takes advantage of that. It just, and that's part of community policing, right? And giving us the information so that we help you upstream.
Absolutely. And then, I mean, when you really start putting together a whole system, you can look at things like a big increase in heroin use driving a lot of property crime, being able to gather that information, be able to tie your social service partners into that as well.
Number, thanks, Sheriff. I won't take a lot of time now because I want to make sure we hear from folks that want to speak, but I'm particularly intrigued by this recommendation about the organized crime division to sort of say, wait a minute, it's not, we're not just dealing with human trafficking, and we're not just dealing with drugs, we're dealing with organized criminal enterprises that happen to have different commodities or specialties, if you will, that they're focused on. Just some quick reactions to that?
Yeah, that's a, that's a great one, and that's probably the one that I have thought about the most, both potentially for and against, and I'll tell you why. At first blush, that seems like a good logical connection to me, that we can put one unit addressing all this. But here's, here's my fear, that we put all this working together, and right now, we've got this huge spike in gang violence. So I fear our focus would shift the bulk of those resources towards that, and in particular with things like human sex trafficking, you know, then you're going to drop off at that, and that, you know, that's going to, that will suffer as a priority over the gang gun violence. And I go back to our time when we had all of our investigations in detectives, and, you know, what suffered? The family violence crimes suffered, until we were able to build that standalone unit that could prioritize those crimes. So I haven't said no to that, but it's one I'm putting thought into, want to have a lot of internal conversation because, you know, the pro side is, you know, maybe you've got a lot more resources that can nimbly shift there, but I think particular things like sex trafficking are really hard crimes to stop investigating, then restart investigating, stop. I think, I worry that that would suffer out of that.
Yeah, interesting. Yeah, that'll be an interesting discussion to continue because I think there's, I can see it both ways, just as you have articulated, but I understand why the recommendation, I think I understand why the recommendation was made. It makes sense.
And it's not just the shifting of resources, it's also the information.
Yeah.
And, you know, recognize that a lot of those activities like human trafficking are very complex, very time-intensive, and you don't want to harm that.
And also interrelated.
Absolutely.
Yeah, gang violence and human trafficking are closely tied together.
Right, that's how they're making their money.
Yeah, exactly. Thank you. Other questions for the team?
I'm struck by the recommendations on the Special Emergency Response Team, and particularly the finding that the members of the CERT team require 500 hours of training annually. Is that normal?
Yeah, it is. It's, that's one of the reasons why we're saying that it should be a staffed unit is because we're impacting other operations for the members that are involved in it.
Is it normal in police, if there were an emergency with a standing team, would they still need a quarter of their time to be spending in training?
Yes.
So it's not because they have other duties that they have to spend that many hours, it's because of the particular specialties and challenges of that work?
Right.
I don't understand why you would have to keep doing a quarter of your time on training once...
It's situational, and it's also changes in tactics and...
I think part of that conversation came out of, the CERT team does a lot of our search warrants for us. Those require pulling people to pre-plan those. You don't need the whole team to plan them, but you pull a small contingent. Except for the two sergeants, the entire CERT team works in a detached capacity. That means they're all patrol officers or detectives or doing some of their job full-time. When they have a warning order to do a search warrant planning, they'll pull four or five people to come in and plan that mission. So I think part of that justification, when I remember the conversation before, was you're pulling these resources already from here and there, and then having to backfill those assignments on overtime to get this function done.
Right, so that does seem to make sense to me. I still, if they're working four 10-hour days, having the whole of one of those days be training every week, I mean, am I understanding, are you talking about training or planning the actual...
It's both.
Both specific skills training and pre-planning for this or that scenario?
Right.
Okay.
It'd seem like having a specialized team that were going to do the search warrants, for example, would be...
Right. Eventually, that some of the training would be on-the-job training.
Right, or that it's that there's a standard protocol or...
Right. Yeah, no, that's worth exploring.
One more question, if I could, to our friend from Matrix. You have, you've been looking at, there's a section here about best practices, you're comparing us, some of our peer groups. What, who are the key peer group comparators that you use for Portland, Oregon?
We were very careful not to do that. We're comparing you to best practices. We're comparing you to what is the best that you can be in law enforcement services, whether we're looking at deployment, management of operations, et cetera. So we, you know, Portland's a pretty unique place, and we could compare you, we could come up with a list of communities, Seattle, others, but it's just not going to be Portland. So we are very careful in this bottom-up kind of approach, not to give you too much top-down that results from what others do. So we've worked with a lot of those other communities, so some things work, and we test them out. But whether it's staffing comparisons or things like that, we just don't like to do that. I'd rather use the good ideas that agencies have.
So I get that best practices is the North Star, but wouldn't it be relevant to us as decision-makers, especially in terms of resource allocation, to know whether anyone else is getting close to that best practice or whether, you know, whether the national standard is a B and not an A?
Well, that's what we did in the study. What we didn't do, though, is give you a table that shows, here's where you stand with other communities. Because I think that's really misleading, and I don't want that to generate the recommendation. I want the recommendation for something like that to be based on what level of service you've targeted here, how highly utilized people are at delivering, and whether they're managed and coordinated well.
Great. Thank you all. Let's take testimony, and then I'm sure we'll have some other comments towards the end. Thank you. Okay, who do we have signed up, please?
We have five people signed up. First three, please come on up, are Suzanne Hayden, Joe Walsh, and Steve Entwistle, Senior.
Okay. Good afternoon. Welcome.
Good afternoon. I'm Suzanne Hayden. I'm the executive director of the Citizens Crime Commission. I'm also a Portland resident. And I want to thank you for commissioning this report to evaluate the Portland Police Bureau staffing, their business practices, and service levels to the community. I think this report is a good start to determine the right size for a police agency doing the type of work against what the community wants, a city of our size, using these objective benchmarking against other agencies and national best practices where they're available. I served on the Citizen Advisory Committee that was formed and met with the consultants Matrix and the Police Bureau to review the findings that the consultants had and also offer some feedback throughout. I want to provide a couple of comments on some key provisions in the 200-plus-page report. I think the report accurately recognizes the many strengths that the men and women who serve as police officers in our community and their commitment to our community with really high levels of service, given the lean staffing levels that they have and the size and diversity of our community, the population that they serve. Many of the recommendations from the report have already been really evaluated strongly by the leadership and implemented, so that's a positive. One area where policing is different than other city bureaus and other careers is the time it takes to hire police officers. And I really want to point this out because the report indicates there should be a net increase of personnel in the Bureau, both officers and civilian positions. Well, what's not maybe widely understood by the community is how long it takes to hire an officer, which includes recruitment, background checks, the mandatory state basic academy training, and just to make sure that it's a right fit, they are on an 18-month probationary period as well. So that process takes over two years. So what I want to point out to city council is that throughout that period, police officers are retiring or leaving the Bureau. So when the Police Bureau suspends hiring or fails to, you know, fill positions that are vacant due to budget cuts, there's drastic staffing implications for up to three years following that decision. And I believe that we really need to have a more stable and sustainable way to modulate the staffing of the Police Bureau, whether that's addressed by over-hiring or rolling hiring. We just need to get ahead of that curve. Just a couple of other issues. Computer crimes unit, that's a significant gap, and we don't have any personnel attributed to that. And another area is the high school, school resource officer positions. I think that is really an important upstream connection for our community. So again, thank you for the leadership in commissioning this report. I think it gives a lot of really complex information to review and helps with strategic planning for the Bureau, and I really appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Mr. Walsh?
My name is Joe Walsh. I represent Individuals for Justice. It's kind of interesting, sitting here and wondering why we're under indictment from the Department of Justice. Everything sounds so wonderful. All we have to do is hire some more police officers, and we can fix all our problems. The major problem in Portland right now is you have large sections of the community that does not trust your police department, and all the PR in the world is not going to work. There's got to be some heavy-duty lifting here. We attended a COAB meeting the other night, and for an hour and a half, we sat through a PR stunt that was put on, and the people were furious. So after all of this, after the Department of Justice came down, after the judge came down, after the appeals, after the wringing of hands, and everybody tried to figure out what's going on, a couple of days ago, they did the same thing. After years of this stuff, you have a major problem. Keep the cops out of your schools, period. Keep them out. Figure out how you can make the school safe without having police in there. The police image is very special. If you have a security guard, it's totally... Figure out how you can make the schools safe without having police in there. The police image is very special. If you have a security guard, it's totally different. They don't have guns. And by the way, you know, when we talk about the police department, would you ask them to check their guns outside? It makes me very nervous, having my back towards them, and they have their guns on. Why do they, you allow them to wear their guns in here? So, here's the problem, folks. You can play this game over and over, you can have studies done, but the bottom line, and this is not rocket science, is the community does not trust your police department, and the police department has to work on it, and it's going to take years, not months, years, to get that trust back. And it's not going to be by PR, and it's not going to be on you telling us how wonderful they are, or some study telling us how wonderful they are. It's going to be when the child looks at a policeman and is not afraid. That's when you have community policing, and we don't have that now. We have children that are terrified of our police force.
Hey, thank you. I think I'll let you go to Wilson High School and propose that they get rid of their school resource officer. You go ahead, please.
That was uncalled-for. That was uncalled-for.
Go ahead, please.
That was uncalled-for. I want an apology.
No, you're done, Mr. Walsh.
Apology right now. Apology, right now. That was uncalled-for. Who the hell do you think you are?
I'm the police commissioner, thank you. Go ahead, please.
Yes, and you're doing a lousy job.
Your opinion. Go ahead, Mr. Entwistle.
My name is Stephen Entwistle, lifelong resident of Portland, Oregon, 55 years. I'm a member of Individuals for Justice, and I agree with Joe that that was an uncalled-for statement. And also, we've got to understand where policing was born out of. Policing was born out of chasing runaway slaves. Okay, that's where policing, modern-day policing started. We, ramping up a drug war, okay, is not a good idea. Chasing after people smoking marijuana, cannabis, pot, reefer, is not a good idea either. We tried that years ago here in Portland, and guess what we found out? We found out that it increases crime, which means you have to hire more police. Oh, wow. And that's what we're here for, right, today? We got 900 officers on the streets or in the bureau. I see as the crime rate's down. I think you've exaggerated a lot of this crime. I think we've got a lot of scared little men trying to build up this police force that doesn't need to be built up, it needs to be taken down. We need to, we need to take a smarter approach, okay? And that's not the case. We're just going the same old, same old here with this, with every other city doing the same thing. Portland's no different than any other city in this, in this nation. My question to the president of the Police Bureau is, what is it going to take to just, for him to just come out in public and say, hey, that, this guy's, this officer is out of here? What's it going to take? What's it going to take? Shooting in the back doesn't work. Shooting them seven times doesn't work. What's it going to take? We just got a good old buddy system of prosecutors, city attorneys, and Police Bureau, and the union, all together, watching each other's back, saving each other's jobs. To me, that's disgusting, and I think the public, the informed public agrees with me on this. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thanks. Next?
Class two, signed up, I believe it's Merla Viani-Riviere and Daryl Turner.
Come on up, please. Welcome.
Thank you. Good to see you. Thank you again for your service. I appreciate it, as many of the people that I spoke to over the last six or seven, eight, nine days. As a member of the COAB committee, I appreciate being able to serve fellow Portlanders, and I take it very seriously. I don't really enjoy coming in these sorts of forums, but given the service, it's what I have to do. I hope you can appreciate my position. While the Bureau, while the Portland Police Bureau announces its demonstration to proactively conduct community outreach and the planning and the delivery of its services, and this may certainly be the case in the instance of the Zeman Foundation, as I heard over the four or five days that I was in the streets and talking to well over, well over 150 families, that was, that was the name that I heard the most, and in fact, Commander Yuhara, his name came up with, with a warmth in people's hearts, and I'm inspired by that, and I hope the COAB can move forward with that sort of relationship being built between the PBB and the COAB. However, the COAB SEOS, which is the Community Engagement Outreach Subcommittee, was patently shut out, ignored, and dismissed, not only by the PBB, but as well the COCO, during the six-day planning phase of the PBB-sponsored, as announced by the PBB public hearing. Evidently, the PBB is incapable, or at least unwilling, to collaboratively work harmoniously with the SEOS of the COAP, of the COAB. This continued pattern of saying one thing and wholly doing another whilst targeting and shooting blame and shame at others serves no good to the public, the process, or any real effective sense of procedural justice. I implore you, as our collective representatives, to begin to make, implement, and maintain standards which reflect a willingness to change, a commitment to, not only to the settlement and the responsibilities in the settlement agreement alone, but those which foster the full and thriving development and expression, expression of each of us. When I learn the City Council has habitually ignored the auditors' reports, and that somehow, since the city has ignored and devalued the important work they, the auditors, perform on behalf of Portlanders, I can only wonder about the operational functionality of the city. The question and focus becomes for me, because certainly I will not even begin to imagine the city won't accept responsibility, but rather, not only what can I do as an individual COAB member, but simply as a Portlander. I think a lot of the stories that get lost, or the element of the story that gets lost in all of the spectrums that we hear, is, is the trauma and the tragedy. And one of the elements, the key elements of the design that the SEOS came up with, was designed to address that, and to bring everybody involved together in a way that we could begin to move forward, looking towards outcomes and not looking towards the past. I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Can I just make one observation? I really appreciate you taking the time to come, share your thoughts. You got my attention when you said that we've, quote, "habitually ignored auditors' recommendations," and this is not the, the right setting, but I think all of us would be very interested in knowing what specific recommendations from which auditor you believe we either gave short shrift to, or you think we should take up. And again, this is not the right place for that, but I hope you'll share, you'll go a little deeper on that and give us the full benefit of your, of your thoughts on that question.
Of course, I appreciate you asking, and I will, I will attend to that. I and we will attend to that.
Thank you.
Good, that'd be helpful. Thank you.
Could you give me your name again, please?
Yes, I'm Mila Viani-Riviere.
Thank you very much. And I was going to echo Commissioner Fish's question on the audits, because he and I both participated in insisting on the auditor's report being heard and acted on in 2010. We then had another hearing in 2012, and my understanding is we are waiting for the new audit, the previous auditor had some, wanted some more time to do some more work. So I am certainly very open to our new auditor, who seems very proactive and who has highlighted some of the issues with independent police review and others, bringing those to our attention. And if you, if you'd be willing to make an appointment to talk with myself and Dora Perry, who's helping me with our, with my office's responsibility with the Department of Justice settlement, and the fact that all five members of the council are responsible for making sure that it's implemented, I'd be very grateful to listen to your wisdom and to hear some of the work that the COAB has been doing, and how I might be helpful in furthering that. I know it's been really challenging with the speed of the settlement having set such an aggressive timeline, at a time where you're still trying to get to know each other or understand what their responsibility is. I don't think you've even had the formal training yet. So I really appreciate all of the work that you and your fellow community oversight advisory board members have been taking, and I pledge to you that I'm going to do more, more to further the work that you do.
Thank you. I welcome the invitation. I will get in touch with you.
If you could just stop by my office and make an appointment, that'd be really great.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thanks.
Thank you, Mayor.
Welcome.
Welcome. Thank you. Mayor Hales, Commissioner Fish, Commissioner Fritz. I'm Daryl Turner, Portland Police Association President. Mayor Hales, our police commissioner, has highlighted the city's strong revenue forecast and resulting need to invest in additional city revenue and basic services. One of those core basic services is policing. While I applaud the Matrix Consulting Group's recommendation to add rank-and-file police officers, detectives, and sergeants, I believe that the Portland Police Bureau, to the Portland Police Bureau, I believe the recommendation doesn't go far enough. Among other things, the city has prioritized implementation of the Department of Justice Settlement Agreement, including ensuring that we have a robust response to mental health calls, community policing, and community engagement, and addressing the very, very, very important and dangerous spike in gang violence during the first quarter of this year. To do these things, we need to have adequate staffing. We are severely understaffed. In 14 years, 14 years ago, in 2001, the city had a population of 536,240 residents. We had 1,049 sworn police officers, which is about 1.96 sworn officers per thousand. As of 2013, a population of about 592,120 with 944 sworn officers. We are now at about 1.59 officers per thousand. During that same time, self-initiated activity has gone down annually 20,000. Self-initiated calls are those situations where police officers actively address enforcement issues such as car trials, car thefts, bike thefts, things to that nature. In other words, the number of times officers are able to proactively serve our community has dropped 10% annually, and that's a large part of what, part due to reduced staffing. Few officers means fewer opportunities for proactive policing. In sum, since 2001, the city population has grown over 10%, yet we've lost over 10% of our ranks in our proactive policing by 10% a year. That is a very disturbing trend. The city's getting bigger, the Police Bureau's getting smaller, and less able to serve the community in a way that we believe the community should be served. That trend is even more troubling when we compare our city to the rest of the nation. In 2010, the FBI published a report that indicated that the national average for cities with a population over 250,000 was 2.7 officers per thousand of the population. By contrast, the city of Portland currently is at 1.5, as I mentioned before, officers per thousand of the population. Using the national average of a city size, of the size of Portland, we would need over 1,600 sworn police officers. We are not advocating for that many police officers. We currently have closer to 900 rank-and-file officers, however. In other words, each of us would have to have an average, we would have to have an average staffing to build up to 700 more officers, again, which we're not asking for. What we're asking is that you look at the staffing study, but also look at these other numbers and make recommendations to hire more police officers over the next five years in just the 23 positions that are, that are advocated for. Thank you.
Questions?
Turner, three quick questions, because we have a lot of people...
Sure, I understand that, sure.
Number one, were you interviewed by Matrix?
No, I was not.
Did you ask to be?
Yes, I did. I did. I talked to the chief of police at the time and asked to be, if we could be part of the process, and we were never called on.
Could we get a copy of your testimony?
Yes, I will email it to all commissioners.
Your testimony?
Sure.
And then, I'm just curious, is, is the right benchmark ratio of police officers to population, or is the way to measure an effective police force looking at the crime statistics and data, and then, and then sizing the force to meet the current need?
I think it's a mix of both. I think we have to understand that we've gone down in police officers and down in self-initiated activity. A lot of the self-initiated activity that has gone away would help be proactive towards crimes, towards community policing and community engagement, and a lot of the other things that everybody here is advocating for already.
But I mean, I guess the simple point I'm making is, you can, you can look at, you know, police officers as a percentage of the population, that, that's, that's a matrix, and it probably allows you to look at where you stand with peer cities. But if, if certain crime statistics have been declining, that doesn't help us really make the tougher decisions about how do you right-size a bureau, given the resources that are available?
A perfect example, real quick, because I know you're, I know you're in a hurry, is the SROs in the schools. A school like Grant High School has one SRO and 2,000, about 2,000 students. That doesn't include the middle schools and elementary schools, which I believe we need SROs to be able to go to those schools, too, and be able to engage children at their youngest ages, so that when they are becoming older, when becoming middle school students and high school students, they're used to engaging with police officers, they're used to talking to police officers, they understand their rights and responsibilities. But not only that, they're, they're friendly with police officers. It is not an adversarial relationship just based on cultural, or cultural, cultural, how you grew up or where you grew up, but also that engagement you have from the lowest levels of school all the way up to the high school levels.
Thanks very much.
Other questions? Thank you both very much.
Thank you.
So unless there's anyone else signed to testify, I think we might want to save further questions for the chief or later, unless he has any comments. That doesn't look like it. So a motion, please.
A motion to accept the report.
Second?
And a roll call on that, please.
Fish?
Well, thanks to Matrix, and that's probably the briefest and most concise presentation we ever had. Mayor, we should, we should take that clip of the video and send it to all of our consultants. Thank you for your good work. And chief, I think we all look forward to the continuing conversations of your reactions to the recommendations, and I would say in particular, it would benefit me to get your first cut of sort of the high-level, high-priority recommendations. How do you react to them? Where, if at all, do they fit into the current budget conversations? And then, because this is a multi-year effort, you know, sort of prioritizing when we're going to come back to these questions, because obviously, we're not going to get to all these or most of them in this, in this fiscal year. Thanks to everyone who came out to testify and to share their views. And as, as someone who's served on the original Span and Control Report with Commissioner Novick at the mayor's request, this, this whole exercise that the mayor set up right after he got elected, I think has been extremely valuable for the, for the public and for the council. And so I appreciate, Mayor, you suggesting it. When I started the assignment, I wasn't sure whether to thank you or to, or to go a different direction, but I've learned a lot, and I think that the information we're developing is going to help us be smarter about what is a right-size Police Bureau going forward, so.
Fritz? Thank you, Mayor, for your leadership, and particularly Commissioner Fish and Commissioner Novick for requesting this study. Matrix Consulting Group has done a really excellent job, and it's very clear, detailed. It's good to have some outside eyes, particularly outside eyes who look at other police bureaus and look at right sizing, so that it's very helpful, and I appreciate the level of detail. It does show a gap in community perception of the police bureau's outreach despite the efforts that have been made, and that's something that I think we can engage our Office of Neighborhood Involvement and our Office of Equity and Human Rights in helping to address and advise, in addition to perhaps some different kinds of training for our current officers. It showed the need to civilianize selected positions rather than to continue using sworn officers. That was a trend that, over the course of the recession, we protected sworn jobs over the non-sworn jobs, and now it would be...
the non-sworn jobs, and now it would be better, and that might help address some of the gap in the hiring needs that was referenced by the Citizens Crime Commission and others, that we will have, we have officers who are currently doing roles that non-sworn officers could, could do. And so we need to continue to look at that. I'm particularly interested in continuing to decrease the amount of overtime that officers are working. It is not safe for anybody for officers to be working two jobs, and we need to be making in the hours that they put in, and we need to make sure that we right-size to optimize the amount of overtime, not only for community safety, but also for the offices' safety themselves. And I very much appreciate the input from community members who testified, particularly the Community Oversight Advisory Board. There are many different ways that we are looking at how we do policing in Portland, Oregon, and many ways that we can make improvements, and so I thank everybody for their engagement in that. I.
Hales?
Well, first, I don't want anyone to mistake the brevity of this presentation for superficiality of how this report will be considered. And I want to thank you for producing it, you and your firm for producing it, Mr. Brady. And as somebody who used to work for a consulting firm, I want to assure you that your work is not going to be a shelf study. Aristotle said once that the unexamined life is not worth living while the unexamined city is not worth living in. And when we get a, an outside, a careful review of what we do here in this city, we do take it seriously. Our design commission chairman is back. We heard a report from our design commission this morning about how we should improve the design of buildings in our city. We take that report seriously. When our auditor delivers a report to one of us about one of our bureaus, one, we all get it, and two, we all read them, and three, we all carefully consider how to make it better. So it's really important to me, and I think it's important to all of us as council members, that we get these kinds of clear-eyed outside reviews, whether it's by citizen volunteers as we had this morning, from the design community, from a professional consultant, or from our independently elected auditor. And then one thing that I want to reiterate, I want to thank you, Commissioner Fish, for your work, along with Commissioner Novick, and then the rest of the council on the question of, do we have the right ratio of managers to workers in all our bureaus? But each of us has a commissioner-in-charge responsibility, but all of us have to be stewards of all of our bureaus and to make sure that they're working well. So I want to specifically invite my council colleagues to look at this report further, to come up with ideas and questions for the chief and the bureau as we, as we work our way through that, those 90-some recommendations, 190 recommendations, I think. And, you know, there's, there's a lot of depth in that report, and I intend to spend a lot of time with it with the chief. And then some of these fairly significant potential changes in how we structure the work, as we just had a brief encounter about here, need to be debated and, and thought about and tested. But it's, it's an important piece of work. It will inform how we do the work and how much money we spend on doing the work, and both are very important. So I want to thank everyone who's participated so far in this process and look forward to continuing it. Thank you for good work. Aye. Okay. Thank you all very much. And we will move to our final item this afternoon, which is 369.
Appeal of Preserve the Pearl LLC against Design Commission's decision to approve a new full-block mixed-use project in the Central City Plan District's River Sub-District at 1241 Northwest Johnson Street, LU 14230014DZM.
Okay. This is a quasi-judicial land use hearing, and we follow prescribed procedures for how we conduct those. Those are laid down for us in state law and our code, so both I and the city attorney will set up that discussion and then we'll proceed. First thing I need to do is ask if any members of the council have any ex parte contacts to report or any potential conflicts of interest with this case. Hearing none. I have none myself. I'll turn it over to our city attorney to detail the process that will be following for the hearing.
Okay. Good afternoon. This is going to be an evidentiary hearing. This means you may submit new evidence to the council in support of your arguments. We'll begin with a staff report by Bureau of Development Services staff for approximately 10 minutes. Following the staff report, the council will hear from interested persons in the following order. The appellant will go first, and will have 10 minutes to present his or her case. Following the appellant, persons who support the appeal will go next. Each of these persons will have three minutes to speak to council. The principal opponent, in this case, the applicant, will then have 15 minutes to address city council and rebut the appellant's presentation. After the principal opponent, the council will hear from persons who oppose the appeal. Again, each person will have three minutes. Finally, the appellant will have five minutes to rebut the presentation of the opponents of the appeal. I'd like to announce several guidelines for those of you who are addressing council today. First, submitting evidence into the record. Any letters or documents you wish to become part of the record must be given to the council clerk before, after you testify. Similarly, the original or a copy of any slides, photographs, drawings, maps, videos, or other items you showed to council during your testimony, including PowerPoint presentations, must be given to the council clerk to make sure they become part of the record. Second, any testimony, arguments, and evidence you present must be directed toward the applicable approval criteria for the land use review or other criteria in the city's comprehensive plan or zoning code you believe apply to the decision. BDS staff will identify the applicable, applicable approval criteria as part of their staff report to council. Third, issues must be raised with specificity. You must raise an issue clearly enough to give council and the other parties an opportunity to respond to the issue. If you do not, you will be precluded from appealing to the land use board of appeals based on that issue. Finally, the applicant must identify constitutional challenges to conditions of approval. If the applicant fails to raise constitutional or other issues relating to proposed conditions of approval with enough specificity to allow council to respond, the applicant will be precluded from bringing in action for damages in circuit court. And that concludes my remarks.
Okay. Thank you.
I have a question for the chair.
Sure. Question?
Yeah, well, it's not really a question. I am with Preserve the Pearl LLC, and I want to be one responding to the appeal. However, I don't know if you know about the events in the last 24 hours.
I'm sure you can tell us about them when you testify, so you'll get a chance to put on your case here.
Are you going to continue?
No, we'll, no, we're going to conduct the hearing, and, because we have to do that. It's on the council calendar. So.
Well, I realize that, but it's a violation of our fundamental due process rights to have a fair hearing, because we haven't had an opportunity to respond to the 51 pages of documents that were just filed.
We'll, we'll give you the opportunity to make both substantive and legal arguments here today, but the, we have a pretty prescribed procedure, and we don't get to make it up as we go along. So we will then take a staff report.
My name's Jeff Mitchum. I'm with Bureau of Development Services, and I'm here to provide the staff presentation for the appeal of the Design Commission decision to approve Block 136. Today, I'm going to talk about regulatory framework, proposal summary, project context, and appeal summary, and then follow up with an appeal response. This is a Type III design review with modifications. The approval criteria are the Central City Fundamental Design Guidelines, River District Design Guidelines, modification criteria, bonus height option for housing. Land use review approval findings must find a nexus to relevant design guidelines or modification approval criteria. Design Commission decision was rendered on January 22nd, published on February 2nd, and appealed on February 17. In the way of overview of the project.
Here. Got a phone going in the room somewhere?
Someone's got a phone going off or?
Okay. Thank you. Okay.
We have overview of the project. It's two north-south oriented buildings plus a courtyard. Fronting northwest 13th is an office retail building, approximately 75,000 gross square feet. It's a brick-clad building, approximately 76 feet height, four stories of office over retail. It's got a rooftop terrace and an eco-roof. Fronting 12th Avenue is a residential tower, approximately 205 gross, 205,000 gross square feet. It's a glass and metal building, 150 feet in height, 15 stories, 208 apartments, eight townhomes. It also has a rooftop terrace and eco-roof. The central courtyard is approximately 10,000 square feet. It's publicly accessible. It has an internal loading dock on the west side, off the back of the brick office building on 13th. It's programmed for lots of spill-out on the ground floor, active and passive uses within. Parking and loading is accessed from 12th Avenue. There are 196 spaces, some long-term bike parking underground, and three loading stalls. That project, as described, was unanimously approved by the Design Commission on January The project lies at the intersection of Kearney and Johnson and Northwest 12th and 13th Avenue. It's a full-city block. It's centrally located within, or, excuse me, it's on the north end of the Central City Plan District and also within the River District. It's centrally located within the Pearl District Neighborhood Association, is adjacent to, across the street to the southwest, to the Northwest 13th Avenue Historic District. One block north is the North Pearl Subarea, and another five blocks or so east is the Union Station area. As far as some photographs around the site goes, this is a southeast view from Northwest 13th and Kearney. This is a southwest view from Northwest 12th and Kearney, so just spinning around the other way. This is a northwest view from the corner of Northwest 13th and Johnson Street, some context across the street. Zoning for the site is EXD, central employment with a design overlay. Floor area ratio is four to one base, and with maximum achieved FAR, it can be seven to one with a residential bonus option. The base height is 75 feet, and with the 45 feet of general height bonus for achieving that three-to-one floor area ratio, and an additional 30-foot bonus height option for housing, the maximum height is 150 feet. This is the view of the project masked up, showing the 13th Avenue brick building orienting directly to 13th Avenue and stepping down to the Historic District across the street, and the taller tower building stepping up to the greater massing to the North Pearl. This is a cross-section through the site, looking northward, showing in green that the base height limit achieved at both levels of that building. And then again, the 120 foot, so the 45-foot bonus is achieved through the general FAR bonus. And then in blue is the discretionary bonus, the additional 30-foot bonus. As summarized by the appellant, the, the appeal claims a flawed, flawed public process, improper awarding of height bonuses, and a claim that the project does not meet all applicable design guidelines. As for the flawed public process, the appellant asserts that the PDNA did not comply with ONI due process standards, and staff and Design Commission have concluded that coordination between neighborhood associations and ONI are outside the Bureau of Development Services and Design Commission power and duties. Staff and Design Commission complied with all city and state mandated public notice requirements, including hearing notices, site posting, BDS website posting, and public testimony at three DARs and two land use hearings. Also regarding flawed public process, the appellant asserts that the commission asking land use hearing testifiers where they lived in reference to assessing view impacts was improper. Staff Design Commission conclude that Design Commission was acting within authority to seek clarity on specific view shed impacts only. Also regarding flawed public process, the appellant asserts that commission improperly considered future design guidelines in the land use hearing process, implied by commission referring to the building as quote-unquote "transitional," and that the commission was really considering impending height limit increases vis-à-vis the West Quadrant Plan. Staff Design Commission conclude that Design Commission referred to the building as transitional under current height limits only, from lower in the adjacent Northwest 13th Avenue District to higher in the North Pearl Subarea one block north. As regards improper awarding height bonuses, improperly awarding height bonuses, the appellant asserts that the allowance of two separate residential housing exceptions to the height limits is improper. All height limit bonuses should be discretionary within the design review process. Staff Commission conclude that, as described in the final findings and decision, bonus height was awarded because it was determined that the project met and in some cases exceeded all applicable design guidelines and criteria contained in the Portland zoning code, River District Design Guidelines, and the Central City Fundamental Design Guide, Guidelines. In short, the bonus is a three-step process. Step one is achieve floor area ratio. The project did that through C1 residential. A maximum FAR award of three to one was given. That is a nondiscretionary award. The height award then follows. Because the project achieved a three-to-one FAR, it is automatically awarded general height bonus of 45 feet. And that award does not have additional criteria in the design review process. Discretionary, or third step is the discretionary part of it, which is bonus height for housing. So additional bonus height, or height bonus is available through the applicable criteria contained in 510, 210, E4, A through F. So those criteria are applied to the request. Commission findings supported the bonus in their decision citing all criteria. It's also worth mentioning that, under Item 1, C4 rooftop gardens and C10 eco-roof could have also been sought as justification for, for awarding additional FAR. The applicant chose not to seek those. Those remain part of the project. As regards public, excuse me, process does not meet all design guidelines, the appellant asserts that the opinion of the Design Commission fails to include 33510, 210D as part of the specifically enumerated approval criteria. Staff and Design Commission conclude that the project achieved bonus FAR and was awarded general height bonus of 45 feet. As previously stated, this award is nondiscretionary in the design review process. Sites eligible for this award, as identified on map 510-3, have undergone discretionary review in past legislative BPS planning studies. And Design Commission evaluated the project in its entirety, including all bonuses, under all applicable design guidelines. City council alternatives before you are to deny the, the appeal and uphold the decision, excuse me, the Design Commission's decision to approve the requested Block 136 design review with modifications. Number two, deny the appeal and uphold the Design Commission's decision to approve with conditions added, the requested Block 136 design review with modifications. Or number three, grant the appeal and overturn the Design Commission's decision to approve the project. That is the end of staff presentation. Any questions?
Thank you very much. Questions? Mr. Johnson? Okay. Thank you. All right, then it's time for the appellant to come forward, please. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Well, I have to take some of my time here to address the procedural issue, because I'm not making this up, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. But, no, no, we can't make the process up, is what I was saying.
Oh, I know.
Is that state law is pretty explicit with us about how we do this.
Okay.
So please don't take offense at that.
Well, I'm not.
This is all choreographed for us under ORS, so just put your name in the record, and we'll give you a little extra time to put on the legal issues.
Burton Francis, for the record, representing Preserve the Pearl LLC. I do know what procedural due process is about. That's a full and a fair hearing. And in order to have a full and a fair hearing, you have to have an opportunity to respond to the documents and whatever argument is submitted by the other side. I got a phone call at 440, or 456 yesterday afternoon from the clerk's office of your chamber, informing me that they had just received a very thick document from the developer in opposition to the appeal. There's no way that we have had a meaningful opportunity to review that document. I spent an hour and a half this afternoon looking at it and only got through page 18 or 19 of a 51-page argument. There's no way for us to meaningfully prepare against those arguments, many of which are false in there. And there's no way for us to meaningfully respond in, in writing to those arguments.
Let me, let me make a clarification for you, which maybe the city attorney can assist with. Your, your job in this process is to, is to argue against the Design Commission's decision.
Right.
Your job is not to argue against the, the developer or applicant's proposal. The Design Commission has made a decision. It's been appealed to the city council. Your, the, the proposition before us from you is to tell us why the Design Commission erred in approving the project.
And, and I'm, I'm prepared.
So that record is, you've got that record.
Okay. I'm, I'm prepared to do that. However, you know, I look at the developer's paper as something as an amicus curiui, and in, under any procedural due process rules, we should have an opportunity to respond to that in writing. Otherwise, that's the last document that you folks get to, get to see. I, I'm sure that your staff, I mean, a little presumptuous, but I'm sure. I'm sure that your staff, I mean, a little presumptuous, but I'm sure that your staff hasn't digested that big binder that's sitting in the council office over there.
So after you have a chance to tell us your position on the appeal, at some point you'll get to make a request of us in the nature of responding further. You have the right to make a request for things like keeping the record open, or asking the mayor to schedule further opportunity for you to respond. What the mayor is telling you is, we'll get to that. We're actually very interested in hearing your substantive arguments about why you think the Design Commission got it wrong. And then you will have a full chance to raise those issues later, including making requests of us to continue the hearing.
Can I make that request now, just so we get it out of the way?
No, no, because we want to have the hearing. So we want you to make your case for why the Design Commission erred.
Well, I hope I don't forget to ask you that I need to submit further documentation. Thank you.
So just for purpose of the council, the city attorney has made note of the request, and I will make sure to remind council to take it up at some point.
Okay, thank you.
All right, great, thanks. So I'm glad we made that record. Now to the substantive argument of the design decision. This overall is clearly a north-of Lovejoy building in a south-of Lovejoy location. The whole trend in development in the Pearl District has been that the height limits have been blown north of Lovejoy. And so the Nolo district, you know, has basically the, one of the tallest, if not the tallest, development in existence right now in Portland that's ever been developed going in right now. Under the current design guidelines that exist right now, there's still something called the Middle Pearl, between Lovejoy and Hoyt, and between the freeway and the river. And those are the design guidelines that should be applicable. With respect to the flawed public process, I think that, you know, the comments I just made contribute to that. I'm not going to address that because I don't have much time. I'm not going to address the issue of whether there's a double-dipping on housing exceptions. What I want to get into is the criteria that was deemed approved by the Planning Department. Just now, you heard that 33.510.210.D, the general exception, is some sort of automatic provision. I've reread that provision many, many times. There's nothing in that provision that says this is an automatic given. In fact, there's criteria under that section 210.D that need to be addressed, one of them being the preservation of the 13th Avenue Historic District. And in the paper that I was able to briefly peruse from the developer, they say that provision there, that zoning provision, doesn't include preservation. In fact, it does. It says that. So you have to look at the impact on the 13th Avenue Historic District under that provision, 210.D. And you can use the intellectual ruse of it being heartwood versus a ceiling, or a seed versus a sapling. The developer uses this language as somehow relating to the context, historical context of Portland being a timber, you know, place. It's really not. You know, the correct floral reference would be apples and oranges, because you have a smaller mid-rise and you have a high-rise. And the smaller mid-rise is, by everyone's acknowledgement, consistent with that district, the Middle Pearl, and consistent with the 13th Avenue Historic District. This 150-story wall that they want to erect in our neighborhood is obviously an outlier. With respect to the criteria of housing exception under 33.510.210.E.4, you have really only two criteria that are applicable, the E and the F provisions. The E provision says that the project needs to better meet the applicable design criteria, all right? That means every one of the design criteria. The argument that's made for this project linking the community to the river, at least by the documentation that I was able to review briefly, is that it's all about whether their new building has views of the river, whether their rooftop has views of the river, whether their own project has views of the river. I read the Central City Fundamental Design Guidelines and the River District Design Guide overlay very differently. I view it as a public document. I view it as a document that's in favor of the public good, not as some prop for private development. And in that sense, 150-foot wall that runs from north to south through this block, which is in the center of the residential area of the Pearl District, not as it's misrepresented in the paper that I was just reading, whether it is in fact in the geographical center of the Pearl District. It's in the center of our residential area. It fails to link us to the river and the community to the river. It in fact creates a wall or a curtain and curtains off that relatedness. One, the River District Design Guidelines at page 10 suggests that orienting buildings and towers perpendicular to the river signals a shift in the landscape that will foster an awareness of the river's presence for residents, commuters, workers, and visitors. Okay, so buildings like 937 Gleason, which is in existence right now, is oriented on an east-west axis, not a north-south axis, all right? So any complaints that the developer has that the north side of their building is going to be in darkness or something like that, isn't supported by the way that the current development in the district exists. Our orientation in the neighborhood is that the river is clearly to the east of us. How do you get across the river? You go down Lovejoy, all right? Lovejoy is an east-west street. So there should be, at the very minimum, a reorientation of this project so that it's on an east-west axis, not on a north-south axis. What would that do? It would reduce the walling off of the residential portion of the Middle Pearl to the Union Station, the Steel Bridge, Mount Hood. It would relate this massive tower to the Lovejoy Corridor. And when we're talking about, you heard a little bit about the Design Commission talking about this being a transitional building. Did you notice how the transition was related to the north of Lovejoy, all right? That was the reference point for the transition. If the orientation of this building is going to relate to north of Lovejoy, it should relate to the Lovejoy Corridor, which would be an east-west axis, not a north-south axis. Positioning the tower on the furthest northern edge, I'm talking about on Kearney, all right, would remove it as far as possible from the 13th Avenue Historic District, and therefore would have less impact on that. It would orient their public space in between the two buildings to feed on to 13th, which would contribute to the vibrancy of 13th Avenue. It would enhance the existing pedestrian walkways that are in the neighborhood at the time. And there's been some quibbling that I've heard before about the fact that those are public walkways, not private walkways. I don't care what kind of walkways there are. They can't have it both ways. If they want to have a public space in between their two buildings and invite the public in, we're talking about access by the public. And the east-west pedestrian network is specifically talked about in a positive way in the River District Design Guidelines. If you oriented east to west, you reduce the profile of the tower. You reduce it from a wall to a profile, to a sideline. This reduces the size and the density of the shadow that's cast all the way over to Jameson Park and beyond, because the shadow studies show that it goes all the way to the residential buildings across Jameson Park. It would reduce the afternoon shadows cast on existing residential projects in the building or in the district. And I'm specifically talking about the Riverstone, okay? If you have a north-south axis with this project, you are condemning the existing residential community of the Riverstone to perpetual shadow. If you oriented it on to Kearney, you have a commercial building to the north of that that would be shadowed to some degree on a north-south access basis. And you would reduce morning shadows if it was a profile rather than a long wall. Let's talk about enhancing and embellishing identifying areas under A5 and also under C4, and I'm referring, of course, to the design guidelines, right? The River District, it says in the River District Design Guidelines, is composed of many distinct special areas. Each of these areas is characterized by unique features, opportunities, or a special history. New development should enhance the qualities of that. As I said from the beginning, this is a north-of Lovejoy building being put into a south-of Lovejoy location under the existing design guidelines, and the existing design guidelines are supposed to be a 75-foot base. Is this consistent with F of the applicable design guidelines? E.4.F? I'm almost done here. That is an interesting feature, because that incorporates 33.510.205.A criteria into the design guidelines of this project that's applicable. And the key point here is, is that there is supposed to be a stepping down of building heights to the Willamette River. And we've just talked about that in front of the council here with the West Quadrant Plan, right? The stepping down is shown. There's no way that this tall tower steps down to the river. If you look at the exhibits that we provided, it just doesn't do it. Okay, just one last sentence, please. Thank you. The developer argues that just because they meet the height and the bonus, that therefore it makes it a step-down. That's a tautology. It's not a step-down. That's all I have as far as my opening remarks.
All right, thank you. Questions at this point? You may have some more later. All right, thank you very much.
Love to answer any questions. No question? Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So now we'll take individual supporters of the appeal. Who have signed up.
So six people have signed up. First three, please come on up, are David Halliburton, Jeff Merrick, and David Morell.
Sir, if you could leave them with the card.
Good afternoon, welcome.
Afternoon.
Whoever'd like to go first.
Guess I'm up. Good afternoon, I'm David Halliburton, Jr. I'm a resident at 820 Northwest 12th Avenue in Portland, in the Riverstone that you just heard about. I'm here to support the appeal. I believe that everything that Preserve the Pearl has said is absolutely true, and those are the base facts of what we're talking about. I'm just a simple guy that lives in the Pearl District that is here to talk about what's happening. We've got a situation where, you know, the Pearl has become, you know, this icon of international interest. And it was based on a sustainability and to bring reconstructed, reconstruction rehab of an area that was blighted, to bring new life into it, and to have low-level sustainable living in a multifamily or multi-unit situation. The Riverstone was one of the first buildings in the area. It's a six-story building. When we bought in there, we thought, well, here we go. Across the street was the PNCA. At the point that it sold, there was no notice. I live right across the street from the place. I had no idea it was for sale. And then I find out that the developer and the president of the college and somebody else were all hooked together, and they got to move over to the building on, you know, Broadway, which is the federal building. And isn't that, that's great for everybody. But where was the ability for anybody else to come in and bid on this project? Secondly, I think that when this building comes into hand, we're looking at safety. I do agree that the east-west orientation of the corridor is absolutely, it invites all kinds of suspect activity in the area. If you go around to the Pearl District, and especially the Sitka Apartments, and you talk about their open east-west corridor, and what kind of activities that's brought to their particular unit, you're going to find nothing but trouble. The Pearl has accepted and been part of the development of Portland, Oregon. We've taken in its low-income housing. We've taken in its homeless. We've got Portland loos around there. Let's let some other part of town take the brunt of this for a while. Let's put some Portland loos and some affordable housing in other areas, not the Pearl. Let's let the Pearl be a, in that area, the 12th Avenue and what we're talking about is a condo area, not an apartment area. And a 16-story condo will take away all of my, any sunlight that I ever have a chance of seeing, looking to the west. You know, six stories, I'll be able to live with. Some sun will come in. You know, 16 stories is a huge, big block right there. It's going to block out Jameson Park. It's going to kill me and all the trees up and down 12th Avenue. And once you approve a 16-story apartment building for 12th Avenue right there, between Johnson and Kearney, it's going to run right down 12th Avenue. I think that 24-Hour Fitness, those guys there, they'll dump that place in a heartbeat, and they don't want 16. They're going to want 32 stories. And is that where you're going to want to put on 12th Avenue, which is a very, very small avenue, that really just used to serve railroad cars to go up to the brewery? It's not a big street. And you're going to have a garage access on 12th Avenue right there, loading zone, all of this stuff. Where are all these people going to go? You've got 196 parking spaces, 208 livable units, and that doesn't even account for all the people that are working in this other building. Let's go back to the original design concept, which was two six-story apartment buildings side by side, leave it at that, forget all this other, we don't need office spaces in the Pearl. What we need are parking spaces, all right? Thank you.
Can I ask you one question? I want to make sure you understand. You're saying that the idea that east-west open space is not a good idea?
It's not a good idea.
Isn't that what exists in the Riverstone?
But it has, the access to the Riverstone is controlled.
I'm looking at that here.
It's a controlled access. If you're going to control the access...
Oh, because it's not public?
That's correct.
I see. Okay, I understand your point.
You see my point? Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Jeff Merrick, and I just want to talk about your discretion on the height. And this is my simple submission to orient you to what we're talking about. We've got Jameson Square that we're all familiar with, where the kids play with their moms when it's sunny. And west of that is the Riverstone condominium, and west of that will be this 15-story wall, oriented to block the entire park, as it is now designed. You know, one day after work, it was kind of a rough day. I got off the streetcar, Johnson and 10th, and I sat in the park for a while to catch a little bit of sun. And on this picture, I sat right where I took the picture here in the lower corner. And then I noticed, what I always notice, is the curtain of shade that comes down because of the six floors of the Riverstone. And that's, so I took a picture of, you know, the kids getting edged out of the water into what's last, the last little bit of sunshine. You can see the picture that I was looking at of the Riverstone blocking the sun. And so I looked it up. The sunset should have been 8:40 that day. The sunset on the kids was 6:17 that day. So the parents had on that May day, and it's less on other times of year, obviously, you know, moms come home after work, they had one hour of sunshine with their kids in the pond, and then it's done. And you add 15 floors, or another nine floors right behind this, these kids won't get any sunshine. And so I guess I'm just asking you, you know, I guess you have a choice, really. You know, do you stand with my rich, white brothers from Seattle to help them add their towers, or do you want to stand with the poopy pants little kids and give them another hour in the sunshine with their parents? And today, I'm for the poopy pants little kids, and I hope you guys are too. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Welcome.
Good afternoon, I'm David Moyle. I'm a retired surgeon.
You move a little, you move the mic down. The whole thing slides. Move the whole thing.
That works. Botek, but it works.
David Moyle, I'm a retired surgeon for three years. I've lived in Riverstone for 15. I was made aware that the Pearl District Neighborhood Association was a stop-off point for advice and decision-making related to building in the Pearl. When the project PNCA closed, or moved, or sold, I would have expected the neighborhood association to play a role and got engaged in the process, went to probably now eight meetings of their group, joined by my neighbor down the hall, who was a standing member of that group, a voting member. He was unaware that there was any discussions about the project. And as we... And as we found, because the minutes of the meetings for the Pearl District Neighborhood Association were not current, as a matter of fact, there was a kind of inability to get them done on time, so anybody that wanted to know what was going on had no access to The Pearl District Neighborhood Association has been around since 1991. It's still, up until the end of this last year, 2014, does not have a connection to any of the condo associations, so that the condo associations in that district know what's going on. There is no official connection between these groups, which is really kind of surprising to me. As someone that went to the meetings for the district association, the neighborhood association, it became very clear they were their own entity. And because most of the people that live in the Pearl are renters, there are owners, of which we represent, some owners, most of the people that live in the Pearl are renters. The ability for the people who contribute and feel it's a neighborhood, not a transient rental group, are really underrepresented or not represented. And the ONI through NWNW had sent to the district association that they were not performing according to the metrics of having their information out there. That was in 2012. I have included some documents about their performance. The people at the neighborhood association do good work, but really, them as a voice for the neighborhood is inadequate. Thank you.
Sir, can I just, because we're going to have other people testify, we are hearing this as an appeal of a decision by the Design Commission. And you're raising perfectly valid concerns as a citizen about the neighborhood association, whether it represents your interests, other kinds of things. But I would just say that for other people testifying, we're bound by a set of rules and laws. And so it's most helpful to us to hear why people believe that the Design Commission got it wrong, and what code language has been applied incorrectly. And it's not to say that, I'm minimizing your concerns, I'm just saying that it doesn't help us, other than we're becoming aware of what...
This project, I'll say one thing. This project went through the neighborhood association and got massaged into a direction based on their advice, which did not represent the neighborhood, to the current status that it's in.
Okay.
That's the point.
But again, we don't, the mayor has, the mayor is very generous in terms of these hearings and making sure people get a chance to be heard, but the question of the sale of the building, or the question of the neighborhood association, is not technically the issue that's before us. And the more focus on the code and the specific legal issues, the more helpful it is for us to then decide whether we think the Design Commission got it right.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay.
The last three I showed signed up are Suzanne Leonard, Ilana Schwartz, and Stark Ackerman.
I think Mr. Ackerman is representing the applicant. Right. Okay. So, okay. Anyone else wants to speak in support of the appeal? Okay. You two get the last word on that side of the question.
I am not speaking for myself. I am reading a testimony from Judy Duncan, who is a real estate agent in the Pearl. My name is Judy Duncan.
And this is Suzanne Leonard, reading the statement.
Sorry.
We have to have your name.
I am Suzanne Leonard, 1030 Northwest Johnson Street in the Tannup Place, Director of International Making Cities Livable Conferences. My name is Judy Duncan. I live in 725 Northwest 10th, number 503 Portland, Oregon, in the Tannup Place condominiums, built in 2000. I discovered the Pearl District in 1996, before mainstream knew what the Pearl District was or where it was. I fell in love with the concept of the city and developers taking this blighted area and creating a residential area where people could live, work, and recreate. At that time, there was no Jamison Square Park, only a few new condominiums developed and vast old rail yards. Imagine. I have been a real estate broker for the past 22 years. After discovering the Pearl District, I moved my residence and my business to the Pearl in 2000. I wanted to invest in this neighborhood and work here. I love my neighborhood and have many friends here. I meet many people who are moving from another state or country. What draws people here is that it feels European, people say. This is created by not having canyons of very tall buildings. The ambience we feel around Jamison Square is very pleasant and inviting, with an abundance of airspace and open skies with light, such a critical need in the winter months. The Pearl District is changing. That is a fact, and it will continue to change because people want to live, work, and play here. It's very inviting. We who live and work here should have a determining weight in what is built here. We have the vested interest. We pay the taxes to maintain what it is. The visionary and father of the Pearl District, Al Solheim, could not have said it more wisely. It's been especially exciting, I quote, "It's been especially exciting over the past 20 years, and it's going to continue." And that's because the people who have been involved in developing it are local, and they understand what can and should be done. They care about what they're doing. Where do you, who are affecting the changes, live, work, and play?
Thank you. Welcome.
Good afternoon. I'm Ilana Schwartz. I live at 820 Northwest 12th Avenue. And I'm here to wholeheartedly support the Preserve the Pearl LSC appeal. I agree with everything that was put into that appeal. But I want to make two points this afternoon. One is, I'm sorry, Commissioner Fish, but it is about the Pearl Neighborhood Association. That was part of the appeal, that there wasn't due process, that the neighborhood association met with the developer, and we as the residents of that community were not notified, were not told about it, couldn't find out about it in the notes. So frankly, I feel ripped off. I work for the City of Portland. I'm not here, I'm on my own time right now, but I know that is not the intent of ONI to have something like that happen.
My only point was, you're actually before the city council now, and we're the decision-makers. So you get to make whatever argument you want about the law and the code, and you've got the council's attention. And I'm just saying, it doesn't, whatever their challenges there are with the neighborhood association, you're actually talking to the decision-makers. So we can go right to the legal issues that concern you about height and code interpretation and precedent, and we're going to make a decision based on your testimony. That's the only point I was making.
Right. Yeah. And my point is that we might not be here if the neighborhood association had included us from the beginning. So I just wanted to make that point. The second point I want to make is, at one of the DAR meetings, the owner of Cool Moon Ice Cream was there. And I don't know if she's here today, but she gave a testimony, you know, she's a small business owner, and she gave a very compelling testimony about the increased density of the shadow on the park was really going to, could really affect her business. And that's the kind of businesses we want in Portland. I mean, if you've ever been to that corner, that business brings people out. There are children playing. There are multi-generations of people there. And her business will be in jeopardy with this building. That's the kind of businesses that we want here in Portland. I know that you support small businesses. I mean, the neighborhood does definitely not need another Botox shop or something like that. So in conclusion, I just want you to listen to the testimony here, the recommendations put forth by the Preserve the Pearl LSC, and remand this case back to the Design Commission. We're not opposing a building. We're opposing the orientation of the building and the height of the building, as was represented in the appeal. Thank you.
Thank you.
Could you just tell me, why do you, so presumably you'd like it to be oriented 90 degrees?
Right.
And why, in your own words, why is that, would that be better?
Because it doesn't create a wall on 12th Avenue. 12th Avenue is very narrow. So by reorienting it, you have the wall facing the other way, so you don't have that wall. On 12th Avenue, you're not creating the shadow on Jamison Park, and also the Riverstone condominiums. Plus, it goes more with the current design ordinances, where the mid Pearl doesn't have those tall buildings, so that it makes it more of that transition building, which the commission actually spoke about.
Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hi. My name's Tim Allen. We live in, my wife Kathy and I live in the Marshall Wells condominium lofts, 1420 Lovejoy. And I'll pare this down because I address some things that aren't necessarily addressing the design. Eleven years ago, we invested in a condominium at Marshall Wells at 1420 Northwest Lovejoy. Our plan was to retire an agent place in Portland. Concern in selecting the unit at the time was building heights. We were told by our sales agent, sales agent, that the limit was 75 feet. For that reason, we selected a more expensive unit on the third floor, facing east towards the river, so we'd have some sunlight. What we didn't know at the time is that more than a dozen high-rise buildings north of Lovejoy were in various stages of development. Soon, our view of the Fremont and Broadway bridges and the river was gone. The sky to the northeast was reduced to a sliver at the top of our windows by the high-rises. We were left with a small rectangular view of the sky to the southeast. Should Block 136 be developed as proposed, we will almost never have direct sunlight on our unit, since the proposed 150-foot tall building will shade a lower floor like ours for pretty much all day. The proposed development of Block 136 will drastically and negatively affect our quality of life and decrease the value of our property. When we selected the Pearl District to live, we were there, or we felt there was a desire in Portland to preserve the district's warehouse heritage by preserving and repurposing buildings. The proposed development of Block 136 is in direct conflict with that notion. It's extremely incongruous with the low-rise neighborhood which surrounds it. We are not totally against development, but it should be right-sized for the residents, property owners, and taxpayers of the neighborhood, and not supersized for the benefit of the developers. I'd also like to address notification, guarding notification of local residents. Although we live one block from Block 136, we never heard a word about the proposed development until the period for comment was closed. Our neighbors happened to stop by while they were walking their dog and saw a small piece of paper taped to the side of the building and told us about it. In fact, to this day, many residents who live in close proximity to Block 136 still have no idea about the proposed building. I'll pass over the rest and just say that, to conclude, we strongly urge the city maintain existing height limits in the Pearl District south of Lovejoy. This will preserve the existing property values, quality of life for residents and taxpayers, and the heritage of the warehouse district.
Thank you very much. Thank you all. Okay. Anyone else want to speak in support of the appeal? If not, then we'll turn to the applicant and their presentation. So you've got slides? Is that what we're queuing up here?
We do. PowerPoint presentation.
Okay. All right. Carla will get it queued up for us whenever you're ready.
All right. Thank you.
Okay. There it is.
Mayor Hales, Commissioner Fritz, Commissioner Fish. My name is Stark Ackerman. I'm an attorney at Black Helterline, and I'm here representing Security Properties. The applicant. My address is 805 Southwest Broadway, Portland, 97205. I'd like to introduce several others on the project team who are here today to help in this presentation and to answer any questions that might come up. On my left is Phil Wiest, an associate at my firm. On my right is Heidi Oyen from Methune, who's the firm that has designed this project. And in the audience are John Morosco and Michael Nanny from Security Properties. I'd like to begin our presentation by saying that we think we have a great multi-use project for Block 136 in the Pearl District. And the Design Commission agreed unanimously. The project provides an office and retail building, and also a residential building, that together not only recognize the 13th Avenue Historic District and the growing residential focus of the Pearl District, but also add a new public space in the form of a central courtyard, one-quarter block in area, running the length of the whole block. This project is the product of extensive public involvement and close collaboration with the Design Commission, and meets or exceeds all applicable approval criteria and design guidelines, as is reflected in the Design Commission's approval. I'd like now to turn this over to Heidi to describe for you the key features of the project, after which I want to discuss some of the most important factors we think you should consider in making your decision. Heidi?
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, it's been a great pleasure to work in this special part of the Pearl District. As you know, the Block 136 is located between 12th and 13th, Johnson and Kearney. It's directly kitty-corner to the Historic District and equidistant to the Willamette River in both the east and north directions. The Pearl has fantastic courtyards, I mean, just absolutely fantastic courtyards. And early on in our process, we studied these courtyards, and we learned that most of the courtyards in public or semi-public land are oriented in the north-south direction. And it is the vacated right-of-ways that go east and west. This lets a lot of great sunlight in. It's definitely something we wanted to do in our project. So this shows the ground floor plan with two bar buildings. On the left is the 13th Avenue building offices, and on the right is the 12th Avenue apartment building. There's the large quarter-block-sized courtyard in the middle. It's 50 feet by 200 feet long. This orientation allows sun to warm the courtyard during the day, and provides equal daylight to the buildings, rather than having a long, dark north facade. It also lets us build a long dock along 13th Avenue. We've then raised the level of the retail floor at that three-foot dock level all the way through the building, and built another dock on the courtyard side. This allows retail to spill on the north, or on the east and west. And then we've set the retail on Johnson and Kearney low at sidewalk level, so every part of this building has great spill-out potential. For the apartment building, the entry is located off the courtyard, and the amenity spaces wrap into the courtyard. Then eight townhouses wrap the corner of Johnson and Kearney, kitty-corner from Johnson Street townhouses that are firm-designed. And then there's the garage and loading entrances, kind of up on the northern part of 12th Avenue. We met with the PDNA early on and took their advice to keep 13th Avenue building low in response to the Historic District, to build some on-grade open space, and to build office use at all. This was, at first, a residential project. Security Properties is a developer of apartment buildings, but the Pearl District Neighborhood Association thought there was a demand for office in the neighborhood, and they had a desire to have daytime activity on the site. When using all the available, or all the allowable FAR, this left the apartment building at 150 feet tall. And it turns out, the PDNA was right. Security Properties has a lot of interest in leasing the office space. And depending on the type of office, we estimate that it could serve 300 to 480 jobs, with all of those people stimulating daytime businesses during the day. all of those people stimulating daytime businesses during the day. The Pearl has developed over time in really different cycles, from the warehouses to newer townhouses to the more recent high-rises. It's a diverse and dynamic neighborhood. It's wonderful for that, and we wanted to add to that. We sometimes develop a guiding concept when designing a project. And in this case, we were inspired by the working durable heartwood for the low-rise and light-seeking fresh seedlings for the high-rise. This metaphor was inspired by the diversity of the Pearl. And you can see how it influences the form and materiality of the two buildings, with the low-rise being a solid-looking brick building and the high-rise a taller-looking metal-and-glass building. This view shows how the buildings fit into the district with a view towards the Willamette. The Design Commission was pleased with the overall massing and orientation of the project, and they were supportive of bonus height in order to keep the office low at the Historic District and to keep the courtyard on-grade. And they advised that the success of the project would hinge on how well the ground-floor levels were integrated into the street level. So they were giving us the height, but it felt like the street level was important for that. So we went into the Pearl District. Often, we studied materials, great docks along 13th Avenue, townhouses, what worked, what didn't, how garage doors were integrated. We had already studied the courtyards a bit. And then we took the best recipes for what works in the Pearl and worked them into every edge of the design of the project. Really, we have eight edges here. So I will walk you through those now along the ground levels. This is the 12th Avenue building. It'll have eight townhouses, four facing Johnson and four on 12th Avenue. They'll have-
Their entrances are on-
Their entrances are. They're also an accessible entrance from inside the building, but they're all accessed directly from the street. This shows four of them along 12th Avenue. The stoops are raised about two or three feet, depending on the slope, from the sidewalk. Also has a light screen element and two layers of planting. And this, we think, is a good recipe for allowing people to be on their patios with a little bit of privacy where they can watch the world go by but not feel like they're in a fishbowl. And then the courtyard, this is inspired by a log jam concept. It will use timber salvaged from the existing building on the site for log benches. So in this view, you'll see the residential patio spilling out from the base of the apartment building on the kind of upper-left. Tables and chairs in the foreground that can be used by the public, people coming out of the retail building or from the apartments. There's a bocce ball court in the upper-right, and then the raised dock along 13th Avenue. So there's a lot of activity here. We think it'll be 24/7. There will almost always be eyes on this courtyard. It shouldn't be a dangerous place with that kind of activity day and night. And then this view shows the activity along the dock even better. The dock itself is envisioned to have tables and chairs spilling out from the retail building and provides a great perch to watch bocce ball playing. Security Properties is working to get great tenants for an open-market concept in the dock level of the retail space. You can see how this space flows in and out in this view on the left. And then the retail space also spills out onto 13th Avenue's dock, activating this great historic street on normal or festival days. But as I briefly mentioned earlier, the retail spaces on the north and south of the building along Johnson and Kearney streets, they're kept at sidewalk level, so those are able to also spill out onto the street. So the whole building has great activity potential around it. So backing up again, this view shows all the ways that the buildings open up and all the way up the buildings from the docks on the 13th Avenue building and what we call the patios on the 13th Avenue building for office workers. We're seeing a lot of office workers wanting to be able to open the windows. This building is naturally ventilated just to take a break, and as well as retail storefronts and decks on the high-rise. We think it'll be a great contribution to the vibrancy of the Pearl. Finally, I'll share five slides that are in your packets. The first is a chart that calculates bonus FAR. We earn an excess of 1.94 over the maximum allowed. And then this section is repeated on this page. The color represents the base and different bonus heights that staff went over earlier. This one basically shows where the uses are allocated and shows that the whole housing bonus is used for housing. This is a city zoning map with base and bonus heights indicated, showing different allowable areas in the River District or allowable heights in the River District. And then finally, two bird's-eye views that show the buildings in context with the district. Thank you. With that, I'll turn it back over to Stark.
Okay. We pause for a question or two since we have that before us. Have you done any, are you gonna, okay. Have you done any analysis of what is the impact of the building on 12th Street in terms of impacting light and particularly light on the park to the east?
We did, and this was the topic of the second DAR meeting. It was dedicated exclusively to the height bonus. We showed several times of day and times of the year when no project, the 120-foot project or the 150-foot project, would shed light or shed shadow across the area. And the Riverstone actually shades Jamison Square as much on April 21st as our building would. We do not contribute any more shade. The city staff also did an independent shading study and showed that to be true.
Why did you put the higher building on 13th and the lower building on 12th rather than the other way around?
The lower building on 13th is in reference to the Historic District. It's a lower district. The height requirements are lower there, and we just wanted to be in keeping with the scale of development along 13th Avenue.
Thank you. It was, we-
Sorry. I was gonna say that PDNA also recommended that in a very early meeting.
You heard some earlier testimony where a couple of folks were arguing in favor of rotating the axis so that it would be going east-west and not north-south. What's your reaction to that concept?
Having the courtyard oriented north-south allows great light into the courtyard itself. If it were to be oriented east and west, it would be in shade all, much of the day. Because this is a great public amenity we're giving back to the Pearl District, it makes sense to keep it in the sun. Having it be a connection to the east and west, it, there's already a great connection along Kearney. It's a cobblestone street, and then one block later, it turns into a pedestrian-only street on its way to Jamison Square. Drawing people to a parallel path in block 136 doesn't make sense if you want to keep Kearney great. So this is a, this is a sun-warmed courtyard along that path.
And am I to assume that all the housing that you've planned for in the taller building, all of that's market rate?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Well, in the short time we have for our presentation, we can't cover all of the factors you need to consider as you deliberate. We want to mention several key factors for you to be particularly aware of. First, as your city attorney has told you, the focus of your consideration is on the approval criteria that apply to the application. The Design Commission found that such criteria were met when it approved the project. We agree. And in support of our compliance with those criteria, we have submitted a written document addressing each approval criterion in detail. Secondly, there's been, there's been extensive public involvement in this process over the course of the last year and a half, and the project has changed as a result of that involvement, as Heidi has mentioned, in part. The Design Commission put a significant amount of time into the project, including three advice meetings, design advice meetings with the applicant and interested parties, and two public hearings on the matter. And you have this hearing before you today where the public can testify. Third, the appellant and others have raised concerns about the height of the residential building. The applicant carefully designed the project to comply, to comply with the height limits in the zoning code, but taking advantage of available bonuses, which include a general height bonus and a housing height bonus. Despite assertions made by the appellant, the building heights are explicitly allowed by the code and actually have been allowed since 2001. I'd like to spend just a few minutes addressing some issues raised in the appeal and by some of those in support of the appeal. We believe the appellant's claims and conclusion that the project should be denied are without merit. I'll quickly address a few of those claims here. We address those in more detail in our written submission. With regard to public process, as I mentioned, this application has undergone extensive public involvement, including this hearing. The applicant, the appellant and others have had multiple opportunities to participate and have testified and raised their concerns on many occasions. The public process that has been followed does not violate any approval criteria nor procedural requirements, nor has it prejudiced the appellant. With regard to project height, the appellant asserts that the residential building height is not allowed by the code. I discussed this previously, but to reiterate, the applicant and the Design Commission have looked at that question and believe the height is explicitly allowed by the code. To the extent that the appellant asserts that the project is not consistent with some height purposes as stated in the code and particularly Section 2, I'm sorry, 33510-205A, not only does this requirement apply only to the last 30 feet of height of the residential building, but the appellant is misreading those requirements. All the code really requires is that the applicant show consistency with certain purposes of the height provisions of the code. The appellant is arguing as if each and every one of those purposes must individually be met, and that is not what is intended by the word, the use of the word consistency. It's really that the applicant and the application must comply as a whole to those purposes taken together. Compliance with each purpose would in many cases be impossible because the purposes are mutually exclusive or can be. And compliance with each would in some cases prevent an applicant from achieving an allowed height or even developing the property. Finally, several other provisions in 33510-210E actually do establish specific requirements for matters covered by the purposes in 205A. So it is clear that when the city intended to establish individual requirements, it would do so. The code must be read to give meaning to the other provisions of the code, and the appellant's assertions do not allow that. To the extent that the council needs to interpret the code to apply this reasonably, it can do so. With regard to compliance with the design guidelines, the project meets or exceeds all the applicable guidelines, as is demonstrated by the Design Commission's approval and our submittal, including the river guidelines. And if I could have just one moment? What the appellant seemed to be reacting to is change, and that's understandable. But this change is change allowed in the zoning code under provisions that have been in effect for many years. The city has already decided as a policy matter to allow this change, and the applicant has a right to approval based upon those current valid provisions. So in conclusion, we believe that we are providing you a refined, high-quality design that will be an exciting addition to the Pearl District. Your own Design Commission has reviewed this project in detail and unanimously approved the application. We ask you to deny the appeal and approve the project as it was approved by the Design Commission. Thank you, and we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions? Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you. Okay. Any folks that are signed up to speak in opposition to the appeal?
I have seven people signed up. The first of the three, please come on up, are Bruce Morrison, David Warwick, and Ben Kaiser.
Okay. Yeah. You want the afternoon? Okay. Go ahead. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Seems like we were just here.
We were.
Okay.
I'd like to go ahead, David.
Oh, you, I thought we were going by-
Go ahead. You're on first. We've already heard from these guys because they were here.
Certainly. I'm Bruce Morrison. I'm a resident of 1030 Northwest Johnson and neighbor of Suzanne's. Our view will be affected by this building. Nevertheless, I personally support the building and the project. I think it is excellent design that will increase the vitality and livability of the neighborhood and be a distinct improvement over the PNCA, the former PNCA building. I'm also the vice president of the Pearl District Neighborhood Association and a member of its Planning and Transportation Committee. I know that the mayor and commissioners have great experience with neighborhood associations. The Pearl District Neighborhood Association makes every effort to comply with the applicable state, city, and only regulations regarding public meetings. Our meetings are held on the same days of the month consistently in the same places at the same time. They're advertised in the media. They are advertised on our website, on our Facebook page, through emails to people who ask to be advised of the meetings. We really welcome the participation of everyone in the neighborhood, and in fact, our big problem is getting enough people to volunteer and to participate in our activities and attend meetings. It's really, if only we had two or three times the attendance and the involvement, we would be overjoyed. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay.
Okay. Thank you. Good to be here again. My name is David Warwick. I'm the chair of the Design Commission, and I want to focus on what was the main issue at the DAR, particularly the first DAR, which was how does this design better meet the intent of the design guidelines? And so that extra 30 feet was the fulcrum of that discussion. I've got five points to make that why the Design Commission did support this extra height bonus. We felt that through the massing, the two-part massing, was very successful in terms of respectful response to the 13th Avenue Historic District in terms of height, scale, materials, and character. We felt that the orientation of the buildings, of having the small building to the west and the tall building to the east, as proven at our request to provide shadow studies, did convince us that, in fact, that orientation would not have any more effect than the existing shadows cast by existing buildings. And we also felt that the solar orientation, as described by the applicant's architect, was better on a day-to-day basis, as if it were shifted on its access to be in an east-west direction, that the courtyard and that public benefit would be lost in shadow for most of the year and also then cast shadow on future neighbors to the north. We felt that the program, well, let me go back to the courtyard. We felt that it was a significant open space for public use, and we were assured and actually demanded that there be no fences and gates on that courtyard. Floor was programmed. We felt that the four floors of office provided an additional use of the site, which is not prevalent throughout the Pearl. It's mainly retail on the first floor and housing above. So we felt that mixed use would increase the activity of visitors and people working there, coming and going throughout the day and into the evening. And we felt that the townhouse design with the raised stoop, the porch, and a, at a request, a difficult item to integrate, but nonetheless they did, which was in a canopy that extends out over the sidewalk to meet the, protect the pedestrian from weather. And we just felt that the overall quality of the design, from concept to composition to material selection and detail, was one of the best projects we've seen in years. And that is why we were in support of the height bonus and how we felt it better met the intent of the design guidelines.
Thank you.
Great. Good afternoon, Mayor, Commissioners. I echo what-
Put your name in the record.
I'm sorry. Ben Kaiser, Vice Chair of the Design Commission. And I echo what the Chair, Warwick, has to say, as well as, I just want to add a few things. One, to the appellant, we have often heard over the past seven years about the time disconnect between neighborhood associations and area residents. And I think we're all staff, and the Design Commission has been struggling with how to improve that. So we're aware of those issues, and it has been constantly improving. So I think with, as the gentleman stated, I think with additional out- So I think with, as the gentleman stated, I think with additional outreach will further improve that situation, so everybody can be more abreast of changes as they come into the city. And as Commissioner Warwick says, what we see as a successful building is essentially the bottom twenty to thirty feet, and where a building meets a city street is the most important aspect of how a building either succeeds or fails. And we think that the trade-off of the additional height on this building is large part to do with what this development team gave back to the city of Portland. So it is probably, as Heidi with Methune stated, eight sides, all extremely active, in our opinion, and giving quite a bit back to the city of Portland. And as the appellant stated, the riverstone is locked or has the potential to be locked access. This does not. So this is essentially acting as a public park into the future, which we think was the greatest attribute of the entire structure. It is, in my opinion as well, in this past seven years, one of the three best projects that I've seen come through from the development committee and the design group. So we think it's a fantastic addition. We did study shadow studies, we studied massing collectively with the development team, and we think they're all fantastic. I also wanted to say that as the city grows and as we're all realizing the goals of the last forty years, these are the kind of the growing pains that we're all going to face. The UGB is working perfectly, driving around the city, you can now see suburban developers doing infill lots, and as many cities across the country are actually paying development teams to come into their cores, we should be so fortunate to have such high-level projects coming in of their own decisions and own choice into our city core. And that, to me, is an example of all the great forty years of planning and forty years of consideration coming to fruition here, and this project is representative of that, in our opinion. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Questions? Thank you very much. Okay, next one, please.
Richard Graham, Gary Washington, and Kate Washington.
Welcome. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Go ahead, Richard.
Yes, my name's Richard Graham. I'm a retired architect and a four-year member of the Pearlistic Neighborhood Association in the, in the planning and transportation committee, and I would like to add my voice and speak as strongly as possible in favor of the design commission's approval of this project. I think it's a magnificent project. I've been reviewing things for four years now, and it's the best project that I've seen come to us. It has a lot going for it. And one thing I wanted to add, and I don't want to repeat what's been spoken before here, but I did sit through a presentation with the opposition group that is here today, and I have to admit, it was one of the most thorough meetings we've ever had, where the opposition came there with drawings, models, sections, and went on for a long time, so they had a very fair hearing of their perspective on things. But anyway, the thing that I like about this project most, I think, is that, quite honestly, this section of the Pearl District is kind of dead. The art school is a great neighbor, but it presents four blank walls to the neighborhood. And I think a project of this type will add enormous energy to this part of the Pearl District, and that's something I really would be excited about. Just to wrap it up quickly, I love the project. I think it's contextual, the brick building, I think relates very well to the historic district, and I think it's going to be a very successful place to be. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Good afternoon, my name is Gary Washington. I'm a seventeen military, seventeen-year military veteran and a three-year resident. I live at the Ramona Apartments, a low-income building in the Pearl District. I'm here to support the proposal of the building. Commissioner Fish has already pointed out that I'm not supposed to divert from the building. I had prepared some words more based on them.
I wish I'd almost not said that, but I was just trying to signal as politely as possible that we were very receptive to hearing the legal arguments as to why the design commission didn't do its job properly, and I hate to see people cut into their precious time with arguments that were secondary, but it's not for me to say.
No, you're completely right, sir. Like I said, I'm just going to, to come in and lend my voice to it, I'm going to piggyback on what he said in the regards of, I've walked past the PNCA for the three years that I've been here. Every time I go to PDNA meetings to listen to what the PDNA has to say, I've seen that building, and it is, it's four blank walls to the neighborhood, and this new project is going to be quite revitalizing to that small bit of the area. The, with the sunlight studies that have been done over what is actually going to impact and affect on Jameson Square, we know now that it's not going to affect Jameson Square, and it's not going to affect the park as doom and gloom as some would have let you know beforehand. And the idea of an open space market in the bottom of the building is revolutionary in that location, where we don't have anything like that. When you walk over and up to Thirteenth Avenue and you get to be a part of First Thursdays and be able to walk up and down and see all the trading going on is fantastic. I think this, because the developer didn't have to take into consideration the historical portion of the neighborhood, but they chose to, to let that be a part of the essence that is the Pearl District, and the historical section really speaks high volumes, in my opinion, as to their dedication into making this a better place in the Pearl District. And I will say one thing where I had on the piece of paper here is that I'd like to remind the generation, the older generation and also this council, the Pearl District has a twenty-two percent poverty rate. So the voices of renters should be heard. As I am a renter and have the luxury of being able to attend these kinds of meetings in the middle of the day, I'm here to stand up against the blatant disregard for the public process that was taken well into consideration. All the processes were followed, and I see no reason why this building should not move forward as planned. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your military service. I'm really happy that you got a spot in the Ramona Apartments, and I appreciate you coming as a renter, because I found that earlier testimony about renters being transient. Obviously, you are just as invested in your neighborhood, and I appreciate you being here.
I plan on staying for a very long time.
And maybe we should give another plug. The mayor's former policy advisor, Ed McNamara, developed the Ramona.
We know Ed very well, he's a very nice guy.
You don't have to say that.
No, he really is.
We work with him, so... But I think the city also put close to twenty million dollars into that development, because we thought it was important that families, making up to about sixty percent of median family income, like perhaps your family, can afford to live in a, in a, in a nice, desirable neighborhood. And then we love the idea that Ed brought the school in, so that kids could get an education there, but that's a shiny example of something that Ed did prior to working with the mayor.
I'll just jump in real quick. As a reservist, the Ramona has given me the opportunity to be able to continue my military career and be able to give my wife the ability to have her education at the Portland State University, all while being able to live in such a beautiful neighborhood. It's an absolutely fantastic building.
Great, that's great to hear. Welcome.
Yeah, thank you very much. My name is Kate Washington, and I'm here to speak in favor of the development. I also live at the Ramona. I've lived in the Pearl for three years, and I've served on the Neighborhood Association in a variety of capacities during that time. I'm also a master's degree student at Portland State University in the Urban and Regional Planning Program, so I do have some training on the city of Portland's land use planning process and specifically the vision for the Pearl District. So first, I want to express my opinion about the proposal. They have designed an excellent set of buildings that accommodate the community character in a variety of ways. The site plan for the lot is designed to respect the historic nature of Thirteenth Avenue by aligning the buildings parallel to the street instead of perpendicular, and it continues the feel along that street. Further, this lot is outside the historic district, and therefore the developers didn't have to continue to honor the historic character, but they chose to, and they've used limiting the height and complementary, complementary design and materials along Thirteenth in order to continue that feel. And finally, the courtyard that they're providing is designed to be a public amenity, and it creates valuable and much-needed public space in the community where we're not going to be able to add many more parks and open places that the city maintains, and so it's remarkable to see a developer want to give that to this really important neighborhood. Second, I want to point out that the height and massing of the development is completely within code and has precedent within the neighborhood. In fact, within one to three blocks of the site, there are several buildings of the exact same height as the proposal. Everyone who lives in and around those buildings benefits from the excellent qualities of the Pearl District without having their quality of life or livability compromised. The truth is, the Pearl is supposed to house at least twice as many people. It was always intended to be a high-density, mixed-use neighborhood. The city has invested tens of millions of dollars preparing infrastructure for density, and to compromise the fulfillment of that vision over someone's view would be a violation of the city's investment and the trust of taxpayers. The Pearl District is a high-density, mixed-use neighborhood in the central city and should be treated as such. To preserve the Pearl, as the opposition demands, would be to maintain its character as a rail yard. All of us have moved into an unfinished neighborhood, and none of us can be selfish enough to think that it should remain unfinished simply for our pleasure. Finally, I do understand that the opposition feels that they have not been heard at the neighborhood level, so I want to clarify on that. Apparently, when this development was announced, the Preserve the Pearl group sent a letter demanding the PDNA schedule special meetings for them. I have seen the letter posted on the website and read it, but I assure you, the letter was never received by Patricia Gardner nor any board members. Though the PDNA has several monthly meetings, which are published in Northwest Examiner and on our social media, Preserve the Pearl did not join those meetings, and when they finally did, they did not ask to be on the agenda, but simply expected to be accommodated, which we did, because we wanted to hear what they had to say. So finally, I recently heard through the real estate grapevine that the day the design was approved, nine people put their condos on the market to sell it. And while this does indeed display conviction of their position, it does not display commitment to the neighborhood and its vision, which is something that the Pearl District and the city actually need quite a bit of. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, others?
One more, Riza Farhood.
Okay, and anyone else who hasn't signed up who wants to speak, come on up. Otherwise, you get the last word before we turn to rebuttal.
Thank you, good afternoon, mayor and commissioners. My name is Riza Farhoudi. I am the co-chair of the Pearl District Neighborhood Association's Land Use and Transportation Committee. I have a packet here to submit to the written record that has our meeting notices, our minutes, our letter to the design commission, but I'd like to make a couple of quick points. The first is about our general process. As a matter of policy, the Pearl District Neighborhood Association strives to review all design projects equally. As you are aware, the neighborhood associations are advisory-only to the design review process and have no standing in making any decisions on development projects. All of our planning and transportation meetings exceed the ONI standards for public notice. Per those standards, all our meetings are noticed in the Northwest Examiner newspaper with a circulation of over thirty-six thousand readers. Beyond that, all of our meetings are posted on our website, they're noticed in our newsletters, which goes out to eleven hundred individuals, and the agenda is also posted on our Facebook page with over eight-hundred-and-twenty individuals who subscribe to that page. The agenda also is sent to an email list of over seventy individuals who have expressed interest in receiving the committee agenda. And to the previous gentleman's point about us getting reprimanded, that never happened. The executive director of Neighbors West Northwest, Mark Seaver, can attest to that. Regarding this particular project, the appellant was able to present their point of view prior to our non-binding advisory vote at our December sixteenth, twenty-fourteen meeting. While we heard their concerns and points of view, and they had a great presentation about, you know, the issues with the massing and the height, our committee reviewed the project with the applicable city guidelines and found that the project met those criteria. So they had their chance to make their argument, we just simply did not agree. Quite frankly, we think it fits well with the context of the surrounding neighborhood. It's seven-to-one FAR, one-hundred-and-fifty feet. If you compare that to the edge, a couple of blocks away, the REI building is eight-and-a-half FAR, one-hundred-and-forty-five feet, and Park Place, a couple of blocks to the east, so closer to the river than this building would be, it's five-and-a-half FAR, one-hundred-and-fifty feet. These buildings follow the code guidelines that have been in place for almost fifteen years now. So my question is, what makes this building so special, so worthy of such intense scrutiny? We feel as though this building should be approved by your account, by your body, and as approved by the design commission. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Questions? Thanks very much. Okay, now we turn to rebuttal, so I'll give you a chance to come back and rebut any issues that you've heard raised here today.
Thank you. First of all, the park building that was mentioned just a minute ago is on the Lovejoy corridor. It's not really part of our residential neighborhood. The fact that their agendas are posted on Facebook, nobody ever knew about that until much later. Now they're doing a better chant, better outreach, but it's still not enough. With respect to the Ramona, my best friend lives in the Ramona, and that's in the north of Lovejoy area, okay? And how high is the Ramona? The Ramona's not more than seven stories, eight stories, maybe? Okay. So, you know, people living in the Ramona or that orientation isn't really relevant, and the Ramona's about to get creamed because the Cash and Carry lot just got sold, and that's going to be a huge development. You, it's kind of a slander to say that we're not in favor of change, that we just want rail yards. That's not, I don't know how many times you have to say that we are for reasonable development, not, we are not against development, we're not Luddites. The, the, none of the presentation by the developer addressed the guidelines that you need to use, that you keep talking about, you need to hear about these guidelines, all right? So, first of all, all of the benefits at the street level that everybody was talking about, even the people that are in support of the project, you can have all those amenities on the street level, you don't need the height, okay? It doesn't mean that it meets the design guidelines for the height. Second of all, the design guidelines are rhythm and scale in the neighborhood, and if you even look at the developer's own material, you'll see that none of the surrounding buildings are anywhere near the height that we're talking about in the tower. Next, about shade. One of the design commissioners said, well, we're interested about future neighbors to the north in terms of the orientation of the building. That's an industrial building to the north, okay? The Daily Cafe is in that building, there's no residents in that building. What about the residents that live there right now? What about the residents in the Ramona that live right now? What about the design criteria that says that you should minimize the shade on existing residents? That's a design criteria that is not met. What about step-down to the Willamette? All right? That doesn't even get mentioned in the fifty-one pages that I had a chance to breeze through here that was just filed in support. This patently violates that provision from two-oh-five-point-A that says there should be a step-down in buildings to the Willamette River. So those are three design guidelines right there, just off the top, not even talking about all the other ones that are in our brief, but three right there. Now, I beg to differ with, you know, the attorney for the other group, because, in fact, if you read the Central City Fundamental Design Guidelines, if you even read the notice of the appeal for this hearing, it says each and every design guideline needs to be sustained in order for this to continue to be approved. And each and every one is not. So we ask you to send this project back. It does not meet the guidelines. It's, you know, what are you going to lose from throwing the little people a bone on this one, really? They're going to go back and redesign in a much more appropriate way. You know, laypeople have this feeling that the design commission and the developers are all together, they're all on board with this, and it was kind of interesting to see two commissioners come in and testify on behalf of the project in that way. And this one commissioner over here actually said that my, it's kind of nice to hear that my presentation was so great, because he said that it was really good at the design commission, but that's aside the point. It is good because the facts are on our side. That's why. So we ask you to sustain the appeal. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Questions for staff? Okay, could we have staff back up for council questions and discussion, and we can see if there's a motion?
Hello, I'm back.
Questions?
So you've heard all the testimony, and I just want to give you a chance, is there anything you want to add to the testimony you've heard, particularly about whether the correct design guidelines have been applied, whether there's an issue around step-down, the shading, and the, and the, and the way the bonuses were applied?
Well, I'd like to start by saying that the, to reiterate what I opened with, which was that staff early on in the process worked with the applicant to, and the Neighborhood Association to craft a project that better responded to all the guidelines, as you've heard folks testify to. Staff...
Staff was accepting of the response. We felt that throughout the entire, both DAR process and land use hearing process, that every request, every directive for greater compliance was adhered to, specifically the shadow impacts early on, as was mentioned in the DAR process. Independent studies were conducted by Bureau of Planning and Sustainability, which corroborated the applicant's findings. I think the salient fact there simply is that there is no difference, or very little difference, noticeable difference, by staff's assessment in the difference of shadow cast by a 120 or a 150 building oriented as it presently is. That the difference between a 75 and a 120 is negligible for very short and brief periods of time, and that would only be around areas that were remote or edge conditions within Jameson Square. With regard to, do you have any questions about any of that shadow? Okay. And with regard to the step-down to the Willamette and orientation to the Willamette, staff, I think, determined early on that orienting the buildings in a parallel scheme northward was a more direct route to the river, frankly. It's equidistant, as the crow flies. But it seems that the, just sheer sensibility of pedestrian connectivity northward would be better enhanced with a north-south orientation. Westward orientation, or reinforcing a pathway to, in a east-west direction, eastward, would, you know, just would present greater barriers in the form of Union Station and post office and grade changes and off-direction travel necessary. So I think the orientation and the stepping or orientation to the river was, I think, emphasized better with a north-south orientation. Other question was?
And the other, I guess there was a broader concern raised about you're just applying the wrong guidelines.
Right. Right. I think in my presentation, I made clear that the guidelines that applied to the site were comprehensively and thoroughly applied to the project. Whether or not the 510, 205A guidelines that appear, I think, in the appellant's claim that were not applied to the site or applied to the project, aren't entirely accurate. We did look at the step-down to the historic district. We looked at protecting views. I can say that from the guidelines' perspective, the protection of public views is the focus on protecting, on view preservation. We took a very close look at the orientation of the buildings and how that particular orientation would have affected, let's say, a view to the Union Station clock tower. And either orientation had no or little, if any, effect on view blockage of established view sheds toward the clock tower. I think the, both River District and Central City Fundamental Design Guidelines were thoroughly considered beyond the codified findings that were embedded in the height bonus criteria. There was very little that, I think even early on, that we found lacking in compliance with, or compliance with those standards. The focus, I think, all along was to orient, to capture the FAR that was allowed by the project through bonuses, to best enhance and activate eight public edges on this project. And I think that the orientation, the basic partie of the project, its comparative step-down to the 13th Avenue district, both to the south, the historic district proper, and the step-up to comply with greater context eastward made sense. It's worth noting that though the boundary of the Northwest 13th Avenue Historic District ends at Johnson, from staff and commission's perspective, it felt like the energy embodied by what is historic about that through the project was carried northward on 13th. So that's just a case in point where the project, I think, better meets or exceeds guidelines, and we just, in some total, found that it was doing that throughout.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay. So question for city attorney staff. We've had a request from the applicant, I'm sorry, from the appellant, to continue the hearing or to allow for further review. What would you recommend our options are at this point?
So for a council hearing, which is not the initial evidentiary hearing, it is at your discretion whether to hold the record open or to grant a continuance. My initial observation of the packet that was submitted by the applicant is that one section of it is the only thing that is not completely information that was already in the record. There's a 51-page description of how the approval criteria are met. It looks as to me as though it largely provides argument utilizing existing evidence in the record. However, it is a large document. It's not a three-page submittal that someone could assimilate quickly. If you wanted some advice, I might suggest leaving the record open for seven days for all parties to submit responses to what they heard today. I know that's not ideal because of your calendar for the rest of the month, but perhaps because it would be coming back solely for deliberation rather than for a continuance, it could be done at a morning time certain.
Counsel, we've done that before.
We've done that before. Certainly within your discretion under the code.
I think that makes complete sense.
And I think that cures any question of someone feeling that they don't get a chance to rebut something in that exhaustive document, and so.
Okay. So is that suitable for you, Commissioner Fritz?
And then, Mayor, we would come back solely for the purpose of deliberating.
That's right.
And the only way the other two colleagues could participate, I guess, is if they had viewed the entire record.
They will have the option to do that if they want to do that.
Correct. And so Carla, before we adjourn today, would need to identify a date and time certain sometime after seven days.
Mayor, I might suggest, as the applicant, whether a morning or an afternoon session is more convenient. There's a lot of professionals on this side, but a lot of citizens over here.
Okay. Morning or afternoon better for us to deliberate, from your standpoint? Got a preference?
It depends on what day you're talking about.
It's going to be a Wednesday. It's going to be two weeks from today, I believe. Because if we're going to leave the record open for a week, then we meet a week later. And so that would be the 22nd.
Carla, do we have time certens available, morning and afternoon?
It would be 11:15 in the morning or 4:30 in the afternoon.
Joy, 4:30.
And you're leaving at 11:00 in the morning.
Sorry? What happens?
Commissioner Fish is leaving at 11:00 on the 22nd.
Do I have? I'm sorry.
It says city biz.
Okay. You're gone early that day.
What about the Thursday? The Thursday is Washington Park reservoirs.
Well, we could do it at, and it's at 2?
It's at 2.
We could do this at 2, and then follow with the reservoirs, because we'll just be deliberating.
I'd appreciate that.
So you're talking about Thursday now?
2 o'clock on the 23rd? Is that suitable?
Yeah.
Let's do that, Mayor. We'll just move the Washington Park to 2:30 time certain.
The applicant, is that all right? 2 o'clock on the 23rd? All right. So then, what I'm going to do then is continue the hearing. No, sorry. I'm going to close the public hearing. I'm going to keep the public record open for a week, so that people can submit additional information in response to the hearing for any materials received. How am I doing?
Yes. Great.
Okay. And then schedule council deliberation for 2:00 PM on the 23rd, giving the other council members the option, if they so choose, to review the record and participate, that the three of us are, will be fully prepared to do so, having been in this hearing and also received any additional information that we get.
So two points of clarification, just to make sure, all three of these commissioners are scheduled to be here?
Yes.
And for people who wish to submit comments, those would not go to BDS, they would go to the council clerk.
C.C. testimony@PortlandOregon.gov.
Say that again?
C.C. testimony@PortlandOregon.gov.
Okay. So that's how you submit additional?
Well, after the hearing, we can get the information.
Information, if you want.
She gets it. She's the most important person.
Yeah. So anyone who has questions about that, please talk with Carla after the hearing. One warning I want to offer is, again, this is a quasi-judicial land use hearing. It's very important that council members not have ex parte contacts with parties to the case. I don't plan to have any, and I know the rest of us don't. And we'll, again, make sure that council members disclose any ex parte contacts if they have any, but I want to urge the parties to communicate through the council clerk, and that way we don't violate that requirement.
Okay. So 5:00 PM on April 15?
2:00 PM.
No, no, I mean, the date by which comments must be received by the council clerk, 5:00 PM on April 15th, correct, Carla?
Yes. That's a week from.
Why does that day have special resonance?
Yeah, right. Get your taxes done, and send us a letter.
What else is happening at 5:00 on the 15th?
Okay. Anyone have any questions about that? Then that's how we will proceed, and we're going to close the public hearing, schedule this for final action on the 23rd, and receive comments till 5:00 PM on the 15th. Thank you all very much. We adjourn.